This meeting is being broadcast live on Amherst Media. And also, the audio is being taped by Christine Restrop, a town staff, for the purposes of preparing the minutes. And also, those tapes are available to the public as well. The first item on tonight's agenda is the minutes of May 23rd. However, those are not ready for primetime. So, we're going to skip right ahead to item number two, which is a public hearing. This is the public hearing SPR 2012-00005, M13095, and special permit 2012-00002-M13096. That's 67 North Hampton Road, brought by the trustees of Amherst College. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised, and notice has been posted in the Town Hall and sent to a butters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on this proposed site plan. This is a combined public hearing to hear site plan review and a special permit for renovation and construction of a new addition to an existing dormitory, including parking lot and site improvements, modification of front yard setback requirement in Section 6.6 and Table 3 footnote A of the zoning bylaw. A map parcel 14A, or map 14A parcel 223. And this is general residence, RG. Do any board members have disclosures about this hearing? Mr. Crowner?
I'm a graduate of Amherst College.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. At this point, I'd like to ask that the applicant present your application. Ms. Restrop?
May I just make a note that this public hearing was advertised for May 16th? And the Chair of the Planning Board and I appeared in this room, and David Weber continued the hearing until tonight because of conflict with the town meeting.
That's correct. The meeting of May 16th was rather sparsely attended. However, we did accomplish the one item of business that we set out to do, and so it was a small success that night. Please, you can begin.
Okay. So, I just... It hasn't been time. This is the PowerPoint, as well as Christine showing up. Okay, so, I am Tom Davies. I'm the Director of Design and Construction for Amherst College. And Christine Royal is a project manager who's been working on this project hard, until moments ago. All right. Let's see if we can get this to work. And we will run through everything. Let's see. So, sorry for the momentary... Doop, doop, doo.
Did you save that? Let's get rid of that.
No, it's not going to show up here as one of these.
You just hit the Save button. That's all, not that one.
Okay. Either we're going to open this, or we're going to find this... You want to drive?
Two up.
This one. And open. Oh, yes. Beautiful. And then the magic button is over here. Yes? Yes? Thinking?
It's a little dark.
Security alert? Get rid of the security alert here. Hopefully, this doesn't hang us up. I did that. Okay. Hopefully, all is well now. Okay. Great. So, sorry for the delay there for the people watching from home. Okay. So, we figured that we would just walk through the project with a brief overview and history, and then dive right into using the development application report that the town put together, Chris Restrop put together, as a kind of an outline to presumably address the questions and issues that are associated with the project. So, Seligman House is a former fraternity dormitory. Some of you may have been involved with approval processes and reviews of prior renovations to other former fraternity projects. We have completed 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, I believe, total renovations along these lines over the course of the last few years to a number of the former fraternities around. I'm sure you can see them as if you just stand in the center of the Amherst Common and, you know, do a 360. So, this is the next in that series. Seligman is, of course, on a very large, open piece of property, which has great strategic value to the college. And like all of the other former fraternity projects, we were faced with the situation where, as a dormitory, it's really too small. The current bed count is in the low to mid twenties, and there's a tremendous amount of common space associated with that. By dormitory standards, it's very inefficient and very expensive to operate, et cetera. And it has this terrific strategic value of being on a big, open parcel. So, the solution was to expand this. And here is the overall site plan, just to orient us. We're looking at North Hampton Road, running diagonally across the bottom, and Lincoln Ave., running up the left side of the drawing. The existing building is the darker shaded L shape, and the proposed addition is the lighter shaded L, or bar shape, toward the bottom there. And so, the proposal is to expand the building to create 45 beds in the dormitory, which is about the minimum that is viable for a dormitory, operationally, socially, functionally. We do have a couple of dorms that are smaller than that, but we haven't gotten to renovating them yet, essentially. And so, what we thought we would do is come back to this site plan and talk in more detail about it. But to first start out with just overviews of the... what the building will look like, or is proposed to look like, compared to existing. So, in each of these series of renderings, the top image is the proposed, and it's an architectural, three-dimensional model layered into a photograph using Photoshop, et cetera. So, this is fairly accurate, but not precise. It certainly conveys more than just intent. So, this is the view looking from Route 9, or near Route 9, on the east side of the property, really, the view as you're driving down the hill towards Hadley, or as you're walking to the building from the campus. From the campus perspective, from the user's perspective, 99.9% of the access to the building, of course, will be from this direction, because that's the direction of campus. And so, what you see to the left is the new addition piece with the kind of same articulation as the existing two-and-a-half-story, larger part of the building. And then, there's a one-and-a-half-story piece that goes off to the right, which is kind of a smaller massing. Our architects were really working hard to make this, in the end, look like it's always been there. So, there is not a kind of a separation between new and old. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. We can come back to it. This is really just to orient the board. This is looking from Lincoln. As one turns from Route 9 onto Lincoln, what the perspective would look like there. And again, the existing is on the bottom, and the proposed is on the top. This probably talks more to the specific issue of the special permit condition in which we are seeking some relief to enable that location of the new addition to be located as shown here. The existing flowering fruit trees are to remain, as is shown here. Just to say this, that I can bring up the architectural renderings, which I think are in the packet, if we want to talk to that as well, because, you know, we don't want to pretend that we're, you know, hiding the building from you in some way. But we did want to give an overview of the actuality of what this would be like on its site with landscape. And the architectural renderings don't show any landscape. So, this is the second of the three. And the third of the three is as one comes from the north, down Lincoln, and you see the building on the left there. One thing that you'll notice is that there is a large tree that's on its last legs. And we've kind of semi-airbrushed it out there on the top, but you can still see it sticking up. And there will be a new flowering tree there to continue the row of trees that runs along, as you see in the lower render, longer, lower photograph. That will be, that's, you know, kind of recreated there in the upper to show what that would be like. And by the way, it's not intended that this is going to be painted white. That's just the effect of kind of this compilation. The existing brick with the random patterns of semi-painted bricks thrown in will be recreated throughout the addition. So, with that orientation, I thought I'd give a little bit of an overview. The, maybe I'll come back to this one. The college determined that they would... that it was appropriate to take the design of this to a little bit of a higher standard than we have gone to in the past with the other former fraternity dormitories. For a number of reasons. It's a wonderful building, and we wanted to keep it that way. And in addition, we have a new president, as most of you probably know, who has a new initiative to bring more scholarly activities to the college during the summer, and saw this as an opportunity, since it was already in the process of designing, to focus on it and say, okay, let's make this nicer, better, and able to attract and be appropriate for scholarly symposia during the summer, and house folks for that there. Not to actually do the symposia, but to house people there. So, it will be the first, among other things, it'll be the first air-conditioned dormitory at Amherst College, because that was deemed to be necessary for that functionality. We brought in Shepley Bullfinch to do this. It's a little bit... We've worked with Shepley before on a number of projects on campus, but this is certainly a smaller commission for them. And they kind of tapped into the, you know, the history of, you know, Henry Hobson Richardson and all the other great folks that have worked there over the years, and really brought a strong historical, architectural sentiment to this and sensibility to it. We also saw this as a gateway building to the campus, that as most people come into the campus from Hadley, that this would be one of the first campus buildings that they would see on their way in. And so, there was a strengthened emphasis associated with that. So, there's really been a lot of attention to getting this right. And part of the reason we're here to ask for the special permit is to do what we and Shepley Bullfinch believes is right. So, and let me just skip down to where we are here. So, we went through a number of massing studies, and this is not intended to shock, but this is really where it was heading at first, due to setbacks and whatnot. And the most efficient thing was really to extrude the two-and-a-half-story part of the building down into the large, open site that's available for it. And that seemed to be a pretty good solution until Shepley came aboard. This was really during the concept phase piece of it. And Shepley came aboard and started studying things and convinced us to... they studied probably 20 different ways to approach this, and settled on this approach, which is intended to break down the scale of the addition into a series of components that's more in keeping with the scale of the existing building. They also wanted to create a little bit more sense of a semi-private front yard area in the courtyard, which is semi-enclosed there. It's very exposed there to Route 9 with all the traffic going by. And this was a way to create a little bit of a sense of enclosure to that, not too much, so it doesn't feel confined. And then, also, I guess I'll just skip back to this image. That does it a little bit. Maybe it'd be a little bit further around the corner. Breaking down the massing to have a sense of the original building coming through. But everything is essentially the same size as the original building. So, that little piece that comes out to the east there, the little piece that comes out to the south, and the other piece, which I can show you, that's the piece to the west, are exactly the same width, height, roofline, proportionality of windows, everything else to the existing two-and-a-half-story piece. And so, they felt that that was... they convinced us that that was pretty important. Okay. So, skipping down through here. Where we want to go from here is... let me just look at my notes for a second. Okay. Smaller pieces. So, and what we have, though, is a piece of the building there, as you can see in this drawing, that comes out towards Lincoln, further than the zoning. And at this point, zoning would allow, strictly speaking. And I guess I will flip to the application report at this point, which does a great job of summarizing all of the required setbacks, and also has this terrific explanation that honestly, I was quite confused by for a while, that you probably all know this, but you kind of flip to the back of... there's a little asterisk, and you have to flip to the back. And when you have an educational use within this zone, you have to double all the setbacks. So, that was the first little snafu. And then, the second snafu is that even though the side setback would be, you know, typically 10 feet, but then would have to be doubled because of the educational use, the Lincoln Ave. side, I'm sure I'm telling you everything you already know, is not considered a side. It's considered a front, because it's on a road. So, that's how we end up in a situation where the strict interpretation, or strict requirements, I should say, of the zoning require 30 feet. We're looking for relief from that to do what we believe is a more appropriate solution, but it does come out into that 30-foot setback. I'll talk more to that in a little bit with some other diagrams and whatnot. I will paraphrase, though, from something that I've heard along the way, that this caveat was intended to protect residential neighborhoods adjacent to a religious or educational use in which the minimum setback might be, you know, really right up against a neighborhood. That is not the case in this situation. And we'll talk more to that as well. So, that doesn't negate the fact that it's written that way. But we understand that that was the intent, and that intent doesn't seem to apply. So, this slide just shows the vicinity for the project. On the left, you probably all know this, probably by heart at this point, of the zoning maps and whatnot. And then, on the right, there's the neighborhood. We did want to point out that almost all of the properties surrounding this are owned by Amherst College. There is one there that says AC Prof. That's an Amherst College professor. That home will resort, or revert back to the college when that person goes to sell it. We have right of first refusal. We'll hold on to that. So, there are obviously a couple of properties that are not Amherst College. And, you know, I'm not... I don't want to minimize that, but it's, we thought, relevant to point out that almost all of the properties affected by this special permit setback request are, in fact, our own. Obviously, the public drives by as well, and so I don't want to minimize that. And then, this next slide is just zooming in on that town GIS. And I wish I had a pointer, but the addition is the kind of the lighter yellow there. The star is indicating just that that's the property we're talking about. And this is intended to show that the setback is approximately the same as the next house to the north, even as we are proposing it to be. And so, we figured we'd point that out as well. Okay. So, with that, I guess we're going to run through some of the topics in the application report, starting just with a quick overview of the landscape, because the first thing that we talk about is, you know, area coverage and maximum building coverage and whatnot. And of course, we're building less than half of what the lot would allow by rights, because we think that that's appropriate. Appropriate to the history of the space and appropriate to the neighborhood as well. Not to make it, you know, a 100-bed dorm. Okay. So, da-da-da-da-da. Going down to issues. Parking and driveway. That's really what we're... what I'm trying to address here, is that the parking in the driveway remain largely as is. There's a little bit less pavement along the edge of the building. We're narrowing down the actual driveway, because it's kind of a big blob of the driveway now with amorphous parking along the edge of it. So, we're kind of neatening that up a little bit. And we are extruding it about one space further to the east. So, we pick up another space there to the east. And now, I'm having a hard time reading the issues to consider. So, so, sorry? Oh, the handicap spot. Yes. Okay. So, the next drawing discusses this. There was a concern about the handicap spot. Of course, we met with the Town Accessibility Committee and folks from Stavros. And there was a concern that this be a van-accessible spot. It is designed as a van-accessible spot. It has, as you can see there in both of these drawings, a very large, open paved area for lift functioning to the side of a van space. And we are proposing the top there as designed, saying that there will be a dedicated space that is striped, but it is not the full width that is required for a van-accessible space, and that the sidewalk that is flush and immediately adjacent to that space would be deemed acceptable as a space without actually striping it. We could, as the lower drawing shows, stripe the whole thing, but just really, for aesthetics reasons, we would request that the upper solution would be acceptable. So, that is the extent of discussion on that one. And of course, I'm happy to talk about anything more at any time. Oh, on the right, while we're here, you see another ramp to the right side of the building. That is strictly an egress. And egresses now, in many cases, must be accessible, not just to a landing or a set of stairs, but to an actual accessible way, to a public way, or accessible route to a public way. And that is what that is. And so, the striped area coming out into the parking lot is the egress path from that ramped egress area. And the far striped area, way over to the right, is a trash and recycling bin area. We'll come back to the other boxes there, but those are basically utility areas, transformer, et cetera. Okay. So, the next topic here was lighting and electrical, and there was a question about exterior lighting. This drawing shows the extent of it, and I apologize, it's a little bit tricky to see, but along the pathway, the footpath that leads from the campus direction up to the front door, excuse me, are two sightlights. They are existing campus-standard sightlights, the kind of historical acorn type. They are downcast, Dark Sky compliant. And they will be reinstalled. There'll be a third one of those up near that egress point that I was just talking about, which is, I wish I had a pointer, but toward the top there, coming out of that ramp. If anybody wants me to talk more about that, I can. And that's really the extent of sight lighting. Two existing postlights, one additional of the same style. No light that it will be making it off the site. There are a couple of can lights up in the overhangs at the entryways. And there is a small... oops, I think it's on the next drawing. There you go. Little emergency egress light over the egress at that ramp that I was just mentioning. And it's a very small, little slim thing that downcasts light. The next topic was erosion control. I don't think that there are any issues with this, but we brought the drawings in case anybody wants to ask any questions about that, how the erosion sediment will be managed. Here's a great slide. I figured I'd put it in here just so I didn't skip over it. Traffic impact statement. We are suggesting that there is no traffic impact, that the parking lot essentially stays the same. The U stays the same. It's coming onto a fairly busy road, so relative to the traffic on the road, you know, the one or two spots of difference are not measurable. The next issue was signage. And currently, there is a sign over the entry portico that says, "Seligman. We are proposing that that become a plaque mounted to the wall, as shown here to the right of the doorway." And here's a perspective and an elevation of what that would look like. There may be some rededication. There may be some date on it with rededication information. We can't guess at that at this point. But that's the proposal for the sign. And there really are no other signs other than the handicap parking space and the "Don't park here unless you have a permit" kind of a sign. And really, that's the extent in the signage. So, the next item on here was the management plan. I can address any issues on that, but I didn't bring any slides associated with it, because it's not particularly graphic. Item seven was handicap accessibility. There is an issue to consider here that we, of course, are considering, and that is that due to high volume with the State Access Review Board, we have not yet been able to get there to have a hearing to allow us to not have an elevator in the building. We expect, based on all the experience from prior small dormitories like this, that our approach will be acceptable. In fact, we have a significant number of fully accessible rooms on campus, far more than are required. And in fact, we have more than required in this building. They're just located on the first floor, not on the second and third floor. Technically, that doesn't matter. Technically, an elevator is required. And so, we're requesting some relief from that, from the State Access Board. That hearing is in a couple of weeks. So, the issue here is that we thought we would show you what would happen if we are not successful. And really, the, from a planning board perspective, the change is really in the roof line there. You'd have an elevator overrun popping up through the roof. We'd have some windows in front of that that were false, and that dormer in front of it would be false. You wouldn't see it too much from Kendrick Place, but of course, you would see it from Lincoln Ave. And as I say, we don't think that we're going to have to go down this path, but we thought it appropriate to show it to you so that we didn't have to come back and cycle through should that unfortunate situation develop. should that unfortunate situation develop. The next issue was the, oh, these are the floor plans associated with that. The next issue-
Can you go back to the-
Sure. To this one?
Yeah, so, point where the elevator is.
The elevator is the yellow box, up near the upper stair, near the, near the entry. In the existing, correct? Yep. The, the addition is a slab on grade. And so, if we put it in the addition, then we would be building a basement underneath it to, to get it down there and have the elevator machine room there and everything. So, it made more sense to put it in the existing. Anything else with that? Okay. We can certainly come back to it. Site drainage. Okay, I guess we skipped over fire department review, but I should mention that the issue here to consider, that was noted as inquire about the location of a hydrant. It's not shown here, but the hydrant is incorporated into the design and the project. The, we've met a number of times with the, the fire department folks, Chief McKay in particular, and there is a new fire plug that's being installed as part of this project. It's actually, you can just about make out the fuzzy line coming across near the driveway, and that's where the hydrant would be located, in that, along that row of trees, near the road.
Mr. Brestrop?
Would you mind pointing it out on this plan?
Where, where that is?
Point it out, please, just so I can-
Sure.
Right, this is the water line here. It's, it would actually just be a post up, off the water line there, down there.
Thank you.
Oh.
Tom?
Yes?
Usually, you can move your mouse on the screen here. If you, if you hit where the mouse is, your pointer will show up on the screen. Not a lot of computers, I'm not sure if yours is set up that way.
Yeah, it's, oh, there it is. Okay, oh, yes, okay. Da-da-da-da-da, right there.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe.
That's right. Appreciate that. Okay, so, conservation commission review and town engineer, I, I don't have anything particular for that. We can address any questions that may come out of that. I believe that they are satisfied. We've met with them a couple of times. So, this talks to site drainage and how that's being handling, handled. We, we are installing that grid there below the building, or south of the building, is a subterranean retention system. And that, what that does, it collects all the water off the site and just keeps it there for a bit, so that it doesn't surge into the town system and create additional flow through the existing pipes. That is, as far as we know, approved and appreciated. There was some concern from the DPW that this would be constantly draining groundwater. We have put in an observation well, and so we're monitoring groundwater level. It's not, and hasn't been, through the spring as high as the bottom of the system, so it wouldn't be draining off. So, we don't believe that there's any issue with that. Okay. And, I believe that's, that's it. And, you know, of course, I can come back to or talk to any, any other issues.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right. We had a, a couple of site visits on this, and if I can find one.
Excuse me, there weren't any site visit reports in the packet?
Okay.
I did a site visit report today. Here-
I have one.
Oh, I'm looking in the wrong place.
There's a line site report today, 67 North Hampton Road, and this is in the 249.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. So, there were two site visits. The planning board, different members visited on the fourteenth of May and on this morning. And, I'll just comment on the various issues that were raised. The location of the site was noted to be on the busy Northampton Road at Lincoln Avenue, heavily traveled. It's surrounded by older homes and is a short walking distance from Amherst Center and Amherst College. Lincoln Avenue is a quiet street with a number of stately homes, some owned by Amherst College, lots of big trees, and surrounded by three sides by roads. The site is flat, and there is a large, flat, grassy area reaching out towards Northampton Road. The parking lot is located opposite the building from Northampton Road and has space for currently nineteen to twenty cars. Building is all brick, as was stated by the applicant, and is in a L shape. The proposal, as the applicant stated, is to completely renovate it and create an entry courtyard to be enclosed on three sides. They're gonna leave most of the mature trees, although the foundation plantings of evergreens, I think hemlocks and right up against the building will be gone. They're gonna screen the utility area for trash and recycling by using a fence and shrubbery. And, for that, they will also be removing some large pines on the east side of the building near that utility area. They're gonna renovate the parking lot, adding a space and a handicapped space, as we saw, with ramps to the building. And, the questions that arose at the site visit were as follows. The first being, and the applicant might want to address these as they come up. Why does the new addition need to be located where it's proposed, close to Lincoln Avenue? Why can't the building be shifted to the east? I presume that means to avoid having the setback issue. Would you like to comment?
Sure. And, I can go back to that site plan. It may be a little bit redundant, oops, with other things that we've talked about. And so, the shifting, if one were to imagine shifting that addition to the east, the, the size of the pieces, well, the, the piece to the, the west goes away, essentially, and the piece to the east gets quite large. And so, the, maybe it's, I don't know what the best way to look at this would be. But, while that is technically possible, the preferred solution is to keep each of the components of the new construction quite small in scale, to be more consistent with the scale of the existing building. And, that's the primary goal for this. The other secondary goal I'd note is that as this shifts to the east further, it becomes unbalanced, and the, the gable on the south end kind of doesn't have bookends on either side of it, and just becomes kind of architecturally quite odd, not historically appropriate, and becomes something other than a, a building that would appear to be, you know, more ancient. It's just architecturally odd. The third piece to that would be that, as it goes further to the east, the courtyard becomes more enclosed and cut off, and the view to the really lovely one-and-a-half-story scale piece at the north side would be largely lost. So, for all those reasons, this was determined to be the preferred option.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yeah, so, there was something that confuses me, that, though on the drawing, there's shown a setback line, but the setback line is the fifteen-foot, not the thirty-foot, is that right?
The, as I understand it, I can be corrected, but the, the setback is actually thirty feet.
Yeah.
That, that the fifteen-foot would be if it's, if it's any other use, other than religious or educational.
But on the drawing, so on the drawings, it's shown as fifteen feet.
Twenty. On the drawing, it's, it's shown as wrong. It's twenty feet shown there. The actual setback line is thirty feet.
Yeah. So, really, the, so I guess the, if the drawing, if the setback was shown correctly, then we would see that the existing face along Lincoln is non-conforming, right? It would actually be in that thirty-foot.
I believe that's correct. Yeah, the entirety of that little nub sticking off, that we're proposing sticking off to the west, would be non-conforming.
So, I guess, just continuing along that, so what appears on the drawings is like a very niggly little intrusion into the setback of two feet. But the reality is, what's being proposed is a encroachment into the setback of two plus fifteen equals seven, seventeen feet.
Do you have the actual numbers?
Is that right?
That's very, very close.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone, please?
I was gonna point to this drawing, so I'm gonna take it with me. So, the point was to show the property line, where the grass meets the road line, which is actually not on our property, but within the view shed, and how the building relates to the rest of the neighborhood. But the, the question that you have is the setback that's shown comes through here, and that, as shown on the drawing in your packet, is a twenty-foot setback, because we originally had some confusion about whether or not this was a side yard or a front yard.
I see.
Which is why it was shown at twenty. So, after we had some clarification and found out that, in fact, it's treated as a front yard, that this setback should be doubled from the fifteen all the way to thirty. So, the thirty-foot setback is actually along the face of the existing building.
But is the face exactly thirty feet from?
It really depends on where you're measuring. If you're measuring at the face of the brick, then yes. If you're measuring at the overhang of the eve at the roof line, then we're into the thirty-foot, so. And I, I think technically, we measure at the eve line, is that right?
Yeah, at the, at the gutter, yeah.
Yeah. So, then we're into the thirty-foot.
Keep working on that.
As existing, non-conforming.
So, that, so it's interesting that, at the time this was built, I mean, we can only speculate, but for whatever reason, that thirty feet was a regulated line for this particular building. So, I would assume it was pre-zoning, but for whatever reason, it was determined to be the right distance, you know, exactly thirty feet is actually kind of interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber, and, and for the explanation. I think, and maybe Steph can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but even though this is a, if, if there is, as, an existing intrusion into the setback, which would render this building a pre-existing, non-conforming, which also known as grandfathered, then any substantial changes would require a special permit in any case. But they've already asked for a special permit. I believe that's been addressed. Ms. Brestrop?
I, I was not aware that there was a portion of this building that lapped over into the existing setback. And, so I'm a little puzzled and confused. I had thought that it was, that the existing building did meet the setback requirement. And I think that, I hate to say this, but I think that this is a question that we need to ask the building commissioner. But, normally, when you make changes to a non-conforming building, you need to get a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. I don't say that lightly, and I am not arguing in favor of that right now, but I think that it's a question that may need to be asked of the building commissioner. Certainly, you can grant the special permit for the new portion of the building, which is going to be intruding into the setback. A portion of the building that exists now that's being renovated, I, I just don't know. I'm not the zoning enforcement officer, so I can't really, you know, make a decision. But all I can say is, in the past, when we have come across a situation where an existing building is being altered and the existing building is non-conforming, it's needed a special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brestrop.
May I ask a question?
Yes, yeah.
Have you discussed this issue with the new building commissioner?
We have not, and I think that we need to circle back and find out what the actual dimension is on the survey, because it may not be non-conforming, existing. So, I don't, I don't necessarily know that offhand, that's what we, what we thought. But, you know, you work the math one way, you work the math the other way, and it comes up to different answers. I think we need to actually survey to that, that point of gutter, overhang, and compare that, to make that determination. I didn't realize that there was a, you know, that there was so much hung in the balance there. So, we can do that pretty quickly.
So, in football terms, you'll bring out the chains and see if you need to-
Yeah, yes, exactly, exactly, right. First down, or?
Okay, well, at this point, given that all we have, boy, I don't know how to, I guess we proceed with this under site plan review, and if the, well, we have two ways we can go with this. We can proceed under site plan review, knowing that the building commissioner may require it to go to the ZBA. Or, we can continue this public hearing, allow you to figure out the answer to that question, before spending more time going through all the site plan review criteria.
Can I make a request?
Of course you can.
I would, we, the college, would really like to proceed. We, you know, we, we had not had a long time to get here, and if it can be contingent upon something else, we dramatically prefer that, you know, the, the, this is our problem, of course, but the schedule of any dormitory project is geared towards having it open for when students come in in September, and so we're, we're kind of up against it now.
Comments from the board on this issue?
I think we should proceed.
I sense consensus, so that we should proceed. So, we'll move on.
Can I just-
Yes, Mr. Schreiber.
So, what's at stake is, we can make a recommendation that will be basically nullified, could, by nullified by the building commissioner, who, because of the encroachment, says it has to go through a different process. But, is that right?
Mr. O'Keefe, do you have something to add?
I have a question for Ms. Brestrop, which is that, so the ZBA would normally need to deal with a case involving expansion of a non-conforming structure. Would that mean that they, the ZBA would specifically deal with the special permit being requested here for the encroachment into the front setback? Or would the ZBA then need to issue a special permit for this entire project?
Normally, the way things work in Amherst is that when a project needs a special permit from the ZBA, the ZBA handles the whole project, all the site plan review aspects, and any special permits that are required for that project.
So, so the precedent in just the last couple of months was the project on Sunset, that was a request to make a two-family house out of a single-family house, that would have normally come to us for site plan review, but went to the ZBA instead because of a one-foot encroachment, one-foot-four-inch encroachment, actually.
I think that's correct. But lacking an exact measurement at this point, I think that we can safely proceed, but knowing that our decision could be, as Mr. Schreiber put it, nullified, and that they could be required to go, the applicant could be required to go to the ZBA for the whole project. Ms. Brestrop?
What may happen is that you would do the site plan review, and the site plan review might be approved by you, and then the applicant would go to the ZBA just for that specific request to change a non-conforming building and to modify that setback. That's possible. I would have to talk to town council and talk to the building commissioner about that.
Yes.
Sorry, but we're kind of doing some calculations here and looking at photos and whatnot. And what we have determined is that the, we believe the face of the existing brick to be 31 foot 8 inches from the property line, and so what we didn't know is how much the overhang is, but I, just looking at the photos, I don't think it's 1 foot 8. And so, I think that we, I'm just looking at these, you know, that drawing there, that doesn't look like 1 foot 8 to me, but it could be. You know, I think until we survey it, we're not gonna know that for sure.
So, if it turns out that that measurement turns, if it's within that 30-foot setback, if any piece of that overhang is within that 30-foot setback, you'll have to advise staff of that, and the building commissioner will make a determination about whether you need to go to the ZBA. Until we have any evidence that it's actually, you've now represented that there is no setback issue with respect to that 30-foot setback on the existing building, so we will proceed under site plan review.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Sorry right back.
Well, it's better to raise it now.
Yeah, yeah. We'll have to get the surveying out there and pick off those spots.
All right. Are you satisfied, Mr. Schreiber? Staff, are you satisfied?
I am.
I mean, Ms. Brestrop?
Yes.
Okay, the next question's been addressed already. In fact, the next two, three. Will the new roof be slate or synthetic tiles?
Yes, the intention, I don't know if any of these photos show it very well, maybe the original one here, right on the cover page, eh, not so much, it's all washed out. But it's a very modeled, multi-color, original slate, and the intention with everything in the renovation and new is to replicate the existing, and so it will be either slate or synthetic slate, really with the determinant of that being what the better match is. And until we get into the process of working with the roofing subcontractor and looking at actual samples, I can't predict whether it will be synthetic or actual slate. You know, there's really not much of a price difference between them, or wearability difference. It's really gonna come down to the aesthetics of which, which product can replicate the existing the best.
Thank you. And the, so the existing slate will stay on the, or be replaced on the existing roof?
All new slate.
All new?
Yeah, all new flashings, yeah.
Will the brick on the new addition match the brick on the existing building? You've answered that, I believe.
Yes.
And you've answered the question of where the lights will be located. Okay. Thank you. All right. I guess we will continue with questions from the board. Ms. Kruger?
I had a question on the accessible parking space that you've shown, and I think I understand what you're trying to do with the, you know, sort of virtual striped area that's not striped, because you're locating the van space as close to that ramp, but not wanting that largest swath of striped. And I'm wondering if, since I know you've gone to the AAB for the elevator question, if we have the authority to waive that striping, or if that becomes an architectural access board question, because we're going outside of the normal requirements for, of van-accessible space.
Okay, so, my understanding is that the van-accessible space is not actually required by code, that it is a request from the local access folks, and that we are accommodating that. Am I speaking correctly?
I think it is required by code.
Oh, it is required by code, sorry, I'm being corrected.
It was a request, and it is required.
Okay, so requested and required. Let me pull that drawing up. As far as whether it's something that has to go to the access board, I haven't, haven't gone to the access board with something as minor as this, but that would, I would imagine, would be a determination by the building official.
I have a question about the parking waiver. You're, you indicate that you're going to go from 22 bedrooms and 19 parking spaces, and you're going to go to 38 bedrooms, but as I look at your floor plan, you have a mixture of singles and doubles. So what's the occupancy changing from, not the bedrooms, but what's the occupancy changing?
Forty-five beds, in the end.
Forty-five beds, okay. And currently, you have how many beds now?
Twenty-five-ish, something like that.
With 22 bedrooms, all right. So you're going from, from 25 to 45, with essentially the addition of one parking space, because one's handicap accessible. And I know Amherst College treats their parking a lot differently than UMass. I just, I'm just curious as to why you think that only one parking space will accommodate 20 new bodies?
Sure.
Who are in love with their cars?
Sure.
And who, your population tends to come more from out of state than other, some of the other schools.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Why they would park across Route 9 or 116, somewhere else.
Yeah, I apologize, I should have addressed that, and it's something that we've talked about a couple of times. The waiver is based on our parking system. There is no guarantee or expectation of parking at any dormitory anywhere on campus. We have a student parking system that is a, you know, one amorphous system, there's nothing assigned, students can park...
A hunting license.
Sorry?
You have a hunting license.
A hunting license, yes. They can, they can find parking wherever they want to, in student-assigned spaces, or be towed from other spaces. Many, many dorms, most dorms, don't have any parking near them at all. This is really a, it's there because it's an artifact, it was there before, and so it's staying there now. For example, with Porter House, next to the Lord Jeff, we actually removed the parking from behind that, because it was incompatible with the other uses around it. And so, that has been the case for a number of these off-campus dormitories. The waiver is, is based on the premise, from the college's perspective, that the requirement in the bylaw is not applicable, that specific parking be located adjacent to the facility. The facility, in our mind, is the entire parking pool that's available. So it really, the increase in the size of the parking has more to do with just what's appropriate to the site than it has to do with the number of beds that are located in the building. And we also have an excess of student parking spaces on campus. The number of students who actually bring cars to campus has decreased dramatically in the last five or so years, through a couple of different things, one being the dramatic increase in socioeconomic diversity of our students. Many, many people coming from places and backgrounds where it's just not, not reasonable that, that a car would be part of the mix. And the other thing is the overwhelming success of the Zipcar program on the campus, which I use once in a while, really super easy to use, so, convenience without the expense. So we really don't have any, any parking deficits or problems with student parking.
So, my follow-up question would be that you've also indicated that this building is renovated, when renovated, air-conditioned, you know, all looking fresh and clean and lovely, will double as, will be residence halls during the academic year, and hopefully conference space, as a revenue producer for Amherst College in the summertime, and...
Correct.
So I guess, I get, my question would be then, do you think that the parking outline would be compatible with your, your conference use as well?
Yeah.
Given that conferees are now a whole different type of individual than students from out of state, out of country, Zipcar users, et cetera.
Right, right, yeah. Yes, and that's a good point. The rooms, it wouldn't be 45 people staying in the space, but how many rooms is it, 30, 38? So it's conceivable that we could have 38 people driving from somewhere, none of them taking a bus, none of them taking a train, et cetera, to come in and stay, and they simply wouldn't be able to park in this parking lot, there's other parking lots nearby, there's plenty of space in other parking lots, you know, a couple doors down. So there would be no guarantee of parking for them either at the building. We did look at a couple of scenarios when we were in the early planning phases to expand the parking, for exactly that reason, and it just, it just filled the place with pavement, it starts to kind of squirt out around the sides of the building, and you see it from the main entry, you know, and from Route 9 and whatnot, and we, the administration, that is, we determined that it was, it was just not worth it to compromise the building that way.
Well, I agree with you with the, you know, paving paradise, and then, you know, the other side is looking at adequate number of, you know, the realistic number, regardless of what it says, how many, you know, cars per bedroom. In a residential neighborhood, you know, we're neighbors that we are very, very sensitive about the looks, although I would say that the Amherst, the buildings that I've seen have, you know, been well-maintained and enforced. Also, my last question was, I see that there's no apartment built into this, so there's no resident staff or management on site for the, for the increased building, which is...
No.
Okay.
The, none of our dormitories have any resident staff associated with them. There is a resident counselor system, which are upper-class people who are, you know, have a job, that they have to do this and that, and deal with whatever, programming and whatever it is.
Yeah, they're one of the regulars in the building, then, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? All right, any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none.
Mr. Crowner.
Oh, Mr. Crowner, sorry. I move to close the public hearing.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion about closing the public hearing? All in favor? Passes unanimously, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, everyone. Unless there's further discussion from the board, we can just make our discussion in the context of the design review criteria. Yes, Mr. Rosnoy?
Mr. Chair, regarding the question of the nonconforming setback and special permit versus site plan, perhaps Mr. O'Keefe, or Mr. Carson, or Mr. Crowner can correct me, but I believe this came up and was developed in zoning subcommittee in section 9.200 of the zoning bylaw, I believe addresses this, although I'm curious from the applicant about why the notice of the public hearing says it's to consider site plan review slash special permit. But 9.200 gives the building commissioner some discretion in three different cases as to whether a special permit may be necessary in the case, I'm looking especially at 9.2002, in the case of a building nonconforming as to frontage in or lot area, and nonconforming as to one or more of the dimensional requirements for front setback, side and rear yards, building coverage, lot coverage, maximum floors, et cetera. All dimensional requirements met by the building prior to the proposed change shall be met after completion of the proposed change.
That is true.
That, and, and the first paragraph, 9.20, which says that a nonconforming building or structure shall not be structurally altered and large nor reconstructed as to increase its nonconformity.
That's right.
I believe, as you're familiar, Mr. Chair, the applicant here is not seeking to increase the nonconformity, they're not expanding the existing building out. So I think the question may rest on whether the existing nonconformity is how it's measured.
Mr. Rosnoy, your, your point is well-taken. However, we lack sufficient facts to pursue this further at this point. Mr. Schreiber?
So, actually, Mr., I yield to Mr.
Can I go first?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnoy. I was checking that myself during the discussion. The caveat there, which you didn't cite from 9.200, is that that only applies to single-family or two-family dwellings, and so the three sub-points under 9.200 are only applicable to single-family houses or to duplexes, which is not the case here.
Yeah.
With respect to the language that you cited from 9.20, about increasing the extent of the nonconformity, if the building were in fact nonconforming, which we don't believe that it is currently, since we have a representation to the contrary, but if it were nonconforming, I think the net impact of the alteration would, in fact, to be to make it more nonconforming, that the new building would be more nonconforming than the old building.
Right.
But, but since we at this point have every reason to believe that the building is conforming, I myself am comfortable proceeding.
Okay, thanks, thanks for clarifying that.
For what it's worth, I, I think I agree with Mr. O'Keefe, that because the addition would further intrude into the existing nonconformity, goes into that setback, that it would be, as you described. So, again, that'll need to be pursued with town staff. Ms. Brestrop?
Just to confuse things even further.
Okay.
There used to be a feeling, I believe, on the part of the previous building commissioner, that this special permit allowed under footnote A could be applied to existing buildings as well as new, and I believe that this new building commissioner thinks that that footnote A can only be applied to new buildings. So, in other words, in the past, there may have been a kind of loophole, if you will, with regard to allowing the setback to be less than conforming for the existing building. They would have allowed you to grant the special permit in that case. The new building commissioner has said, I think he said it last week, that that, it doesn't apply to existing buildings.
I'm sorry, what does it apply to? What does not apply to?
The ability of the planning board to grant a special permit to modify a setback requirement only applies to new buildings, in the opinion of the current building commissioner. In other words, you can't sort of retroactively bless the fact that this existing building may be nonconforming. Now, it doesn't really matter, since we currently believe that this building is conforming, but I just wanted to, I don't know, I probably shouldn't have even said that, because it is confusing, but...
Well, we can, you know, more information is always good, so, hopefully this'll all get sorted out.
Mm-hmm.
Behind the scenes, yes, Mr. Schreiber?
But for our purposes, this is a new building. This entire thing is a new building. Right?
Well...
Sure.
Yeah.
The addition is a new building.
Well, the whole thing becomes a new building.
New project.
Is that correct?
I suppose that's, depends on what your definition of new is.
And building. Well, I think, yeah.
All right, okay, it was, did I say him?
No, I, we haven't gone into the discussion yet, right?
Right. I was suggesting, and unless anybody's strongly opposed, that we address the rest of our questions from the board in the context of going through the site plan review criteria. So, section 11.24 of the zoning bylaws, the design review criteria and design guidelines, we use these in evaluating all site plans. And 11.240 is the first section, 2400, conformance with all appropriate provisions of the zoning bylaw, so far as we know. Point 2401, protection... Point 2401, protection of town amenities and abutting properties through minimizing detrimental or offensive actions. I don't think that we've seen any detrimental or offensive actions through this application. Protection of abutting properties from detrimental site characteristics, odor, dust, noise, vibration, et cetera. Again, we haven't seen any of that. There's adequate screening and the parking is located behind the building, et cetera. Provision of adequate recreational facilities, open space and amenities. This is part of the larger Amherst College campus, which provides all those things. Section 11.241 is environmental issues. Protects, 11.2410 protects unique or important natural, historic, or scenic features. The proposed building is designed to extend the existing historic building in a similar architectural style. Point 2401, adequacy of refuse disposal. They have covered that in their management plan. 2412, sewage disposal. This town engineer is satisfied. 2413, drainage system and runoff is being addressed by a very, a solution that I can't remember seeing before, which is an underground sort of storage tank that allows for slow absorption, which is, seems to me to be perfectly adequate, at least as far as the town engineer is satisfied. 2414, landscaping. We've seen that some trees are going to remain and some shrubs and trees are going to come out. Overall, the trees along the streets are largely intact. Does anybody have any issues with the landscaping? 2415, soil erosion plan was provided and appears to be adequate. Excuse me just a moment. 2416, protection of adjacent properties minimizing intrusion of air and water, pollution, noise, odor, dust, vibration. We checked that already. 2417 is lighting. All proposed fixtures are proposed to be dark sky compliant, and there's a minimal amount of additional lighting. Any issues with the lighting being too much, inadequate, or other problems with it? 2418, flood hazards and is not an issue. 2419, wetlands, not an issue. Okay. 11.242, design. This, is this, this property is within the boundaries of the National Historic Register district? No. So we're skipping that. 2421, reasonably consistent with respect to setbacks, parking, landscaping, entrances and exits with surrounding buildings and development. We did see evidence that the setback of the neighboring building is identical to the setback of the addition that they're proposing along Lincoln Ave. And certainly, it appears to be consistent with the other Amherst College dorms and similar buildings nearby. Ms. Kruger?
What the applicant showed us was the adjacent property setback and consistency with that. But I drove up and down Lincoln Ave, not today, but a couple of weeks ago, when the other site, because it happened and I missed it. And I think there were only two residential properties that were close to the front setback. The pattern for this block is really for the houses to be pretty far back. And I think that we're at a disadvantage because we don't really have a view of the context of this neighborhood. We just saw the setback for the one next door. So I'm not right now arguing for or against, but I think just based on that one, we don't see the pattern of development for this neighborhood. I don't know that we can make that assumption.
Duly noted. That said, is there any reason why this, Ms. Kruger, that you would have, or that you find it not to be reasonably consistent?
Well, I think, a couple of concerns about the plan is presented. And one, the request for the waiver on that front setback. I don't per se have a problem with it coming closer to the sidewalk, but when I tried to envision what the pedestrian experience would be on that corner, what we have is primarily a brick wall with a couple of small windows facing Lincoln Ave, where right now there isn't a property, there isn't a building. And inquiring of the applicant, the, most of that brick wall is for a chimney that's a false chimney. It's not an active chimney. So we've got a design element that creates that sort of roof line of the chimney, but it, but the result for the pedestrian level on that corner is to see a lot of brick very close to the sidewalk. And in that drive-by up and down the street, the other houses that had chimneys, they were usually softened and tucked either inside or had window area. They just had other design features. Where this is going to have a lot of brick face. What did we just say? Twelve feet off the property line. So I just, I just have that concern. And I don't know what, talked about people driving by and people approaching from, into the courtyard, students using it. But I think the backside, the way it very much presents to the Lincoln Ave neighborhood is sort of a backside with a lot of brick, where right now there isn't anything.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. It's my recollection that there's no sidewalk on this side of the street. Is that correct? The sidewalk is on the opposite side of the street. And so it's just grass right out to the curb. On Lincoln Avenue, is that correct?
If I can pull up the drawing if you...
Yeah, would you be supine?
That doesn't show it, but...
If you could back up to the original pictures that you showed us at the very beginning. There was one that showed a before and after. There. That's the one.
Yeah, so there was no sidewalk on that side.
Correct. All right. There's no sidewalk on that side.
I have to disagree with you, Ms. Kruger. I don't find this to be a large expansive brick too close to the road. To me, it's very attractive. And in fact, it sort of suits the massing requirements that we were talking about a lot in terms of form-based code with pushing buildings up against the front setback and putting parking back behind, in my opinion. Mr. Schreiber?
So I wish there were more compelling reason for thirteen feet, you know, versus fourteen feet. In other words, because I do believe in regulating lines. In other words, that there, you know, that there is some kind of a consistent pattern that is or is not set up on Lincoln. And so I too am, I guess I'm a little bit, just a wee bit uneasy because of the, you know, really, the... Not having a different handle on what the measurements actually are, you know, based on the site plan. But the, you know, part of me really wishes that it was fifteen feet rather than, you know, rather than thirteen feet, because fifteen feet is the residential setback. But I also, looking at the floor plans, I see what problem that extra two feet would cause. It basically would cause those bedrooms to not exist on the end because there's a bathroom and a bedroom, and it would cause some squeezing. So, so I'm not sure what I'm saying, but except that I wish that the fifteen-foot set line, setback, which were, which is required of any kind of residential additions, were the regulating line.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. I mean, I'll just say something that I don't, and this is just a little pet peeve of mine, which is that the legal setback is not the same as the actual setback. The actual setback from the curb includes almost ten feet more grass between the actual curb and the building than the legal setback. I paced it off when we were there. And the, the distance between the end of that addition and the curb is a lot more than thirteen feet. It's closer to thirty feet.
That's true of every setback. So every setback, the property line is not, not at the curb.
But I would just like to clarify for those who, at home, or who may not have an understanding of what the setback is in terms of the zoning bylaw. It's not the actual physical setback from the curb. It's a legal description of the property from the legal edge of the street. Mr. O'Keefe?
So two things. One, I agree with that. And, and that does vary from property to property. I mean, that is true as a general principle for every property, but the actual distance between the property line and the edge of the street is different. In some cases, the property line is very close to the edge of the street. And as we're seeing here, in some cases, there is a considerable amount of right-of-way between the edge of the street and the property line. So having a larger-than-usual section here does sort of increase that perceived distance. And the other point, from my perspective anyway, is that I understand that the way the rules are written, you're required to have a thirty-foot setback because it's doubled for an educational use. To me, that doesn't really make a lot of sense for a front setback. And so in my mind, I'm really picturing this more from the perspective of the fifteen-foot line than the thirty-foot line. I can understand requiring a larger setback, maybe on the sides and rear, if you're budding up against adjacent residential properties. But requiring an educational residential facility to sit further back from the street than a regular residential property, I guess I'm just not seeing the utility of that rule. So I understand that it does exist. And like Mr. Schreiber, it would be nice if it were at the fifteen-foot line rather than two feet inside it. But I think that there's fairly compelling reasons of site design here that in my mind make it justified to grant the special permit for this.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. O'Keefe. I think that the, in addition, setting the addition out like that, it actually breaks up what would otherwise be a very large expansive brick along Lincoln Avenue into, as they said, smaller elements. I think it's more attractive that way than it would be to have a flat expansive brick continuing along the existing dormitory line. We saw actually what it would have looked like, well, at least we saw the outline, what it would have looked like sticking out straight along the end. And to me, this is a much more aesthetically pleasing solution. Ms. Kruger?
If I could respond, I agree with you in terms of breaking up the line. I guess what I, my point was more about the, all the brick because of the faux chimney. I think the massing and the scale, and I agree, pulling that back and having the courtyard present better from Route Nine, I agree with all of that. It's just, maybe it's my preference, but more of a transparency and interaction between the community side and, or the street side in the building. It wasn't the massing. It was that, that brick face right there, which, yes, if it's, the elevations are shown, whether it moves forward or back, doesn't really make that much difference. I was just wanting to clarify.
Mr. Schreiber?
Is the thirteen feet measured to the chimney? Or is it, it's measured to the chimney?
Yes. It's thirteen foot eight to the chimney.
The chimney, the widest point of the chimney, okay.
Yeah, to the, to the face of the chimney. It's actually fifteen foot zero, as it turns out, to the face of the brick, the wall itself.
See, that's actually, oh, I'm sorry. See, that's actually very helpful for me because of this idea that really, especially front yard setbacks, the primary reason for those is aesthetic. So it's to set up a street line or the absence of a street line. And so I think, you know, I can, I just imagine full build-out on Lincoln, which might happen on that side of Lincoln, keeping that fifteen-foot line, I think, is important. But if it's just a chimney that's encroaching into that, I actually feel much differently about that.
This is an unusual property in that it has three front yards.
Yes.
11.2422, avoid impact on steep slopes, flood drains, scenic views, et cetera, is inapplicable. 2423 is inapplicable. 2424, screening has been provided for. 11.243, traffic and parking. Convenience and safety of vehicle and pedestrian movement in and out of the site. There doesn't appear to be a change to that, any significant change, except with creating the courtyard entrance. 2431, curb cuts is inapplicable. 2432, location and design of parking spaces, bicycle racks, drive aisles, loading areas, and sidewalks. We have a couple of issues with this. First of all, I'd like to say that they have, they've provided in their plan for two bike racks in the patio courtyard area, which is commendable. They're asking for a waiver of the parking requirement, which would ask for thirty-eight parking spaces. And also, they are asking that the handicapped space access aisle striped area be narrower than required and using the patio area adjacent to it as, in addition to the fan-accessible spaces required. Any issues related to that? Ms. Kruger?
In hearing the explanation, I could, I could agree with not having the full width striped for aesthetic reasons. But my one concern is if it's going to functionally serve as an unloading area, that maybe the condition in the permit could make sure it's not blocked later by planters and other things that can accumulate there because it isn't striped, so that it can, over time, continue to function as a, you know, unloading or disembarkment for a handicapped van.
I see nodding heads. I hear a condition. Other comments on the parking? Any opposed to granting this waiver for the number of parking spaces? Okay. Access to adjoining properties, there aren't any that are accessed. Driveways opposite each other, that's not changing. 2435 is inapplicable. Traffic impact report, the applicant has asked that we waive the requirement for a traffic impact statement. Any objection to that waiver? 2437 is inapplicable. That's the end of the site plan review criteria. Do we have any concerns that haven't been addressed, either by the applicant or by member of the board? The proposal then is to grant site plan review approval for this plan subject to a waiver of the signage plan. Any questions about the signage, by the way? Waivers for the signage plan, traffic impact statement, and the parking requirement. I don't know if that's technically a waiver or a condition. I think it's a waiver. We have the additional issue coming up of the possibility of an elevator being required by the access board. I didn't see a whole lot of difference with or without it in terms of the overall effect of this project. And I'm inclined to just grant it either way without any conditions. All right. So I'm going to try and craft a, unless somebody else wants to try and do this, I'll go through the conditions. Mr. Schreiber?
Can I speak to that point? Because I think it's a much better scheme aesthetically without the elevator tower and the fake dormer and the, I mean, it just looks, you know, it looks goofy. And so I don't know if this board weighing in would, because I much prefer the scheme that doesn't have the elevator aesthetically. So I'm not sure if there's a way. I mean, I, I think that the scheme with the elevator would be acceptable, but I would much prefer, for the purpose of site plan review... but I would much prefer, for the purpose of site plan review, one without.
I don't pretend to be an expert about whether, about what's required for handicapped access. Ms. Kruger?
I agree aesthetically, but actually, personally, I prefer the elevator because I think that allows people on the first floor and the handicap units to visit people on the second, third floor, so for visitability reasons, certainly defer to the Architectural Access Board, but I think accessibility trumps all other design, you know, historic or whatever, that if they have to have it, it's going to look maybe not as appealing, but myself personally hoping that it gets elevated.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Any other comments on the elevator? Otherwise, we're just going to accept it either way, and that's in the record. All right. I think the conditions are that there, that the... It's all set. I was going to say the fire hydrant, but I think that's been taken care of. The only, I guess, then, the only condition that I can come up with besides our standard conditions that Ms. Brestrop has in her head is that the handicapped space access aisle not be blocked. Any other conditions that I've missed? And we're granting waivers for the parking requirement, sign plan, and traffic impact statement. Do we have a motion?
I have a question. Are you seeking a motion that would also grant the special permit, or are you planning on handling that separately?
We need to do them separately.
Okay. Then I move that the board approve Site Plan Review Number 2012-0005, subject to the conditions stated.
Any further discussion? Oh, we need a second.
Second.
And with the waivers?
And with the waivers listed.
Second.
Mr. Carson? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor. That passes unanimously. The second piece of this is the special permit request to, of the setback requirement along Lincoln Avenue. Someone else want to try to make the motion on this one?
We have to go through.
Do the special permit, you know, I don't have those in front of me. Oh, here we go. Okay, we'll go through the special permit findings. Thank you. Special permits come up rarely enough that, okay. This is Section 10.38 of the zoning bylaw, special permit findings. As the special permit granting authority, the planning board can grant the special permit if we find the following, 10.380. The proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood in which it's proposed and/or the total town as deemed appropriate by a planning board. And I would like anyone from the planning board to just speak up as I'm reading, if you have any concerns with respect to any of these criteria. I think that the consensus is that this is suitably located. 10.381, compatible with existing uses and other uses permitted by right in the same district. This is an educational use in a RG district. It appears to be consistent and compatible. 10.382, nuisance. There will be an increase in the student population for this. Is there anyone on the board that has a concern about the increased student population in this area? Okay. 10.384, facilities for proper operation of use, we've, I think we're satisfied on that. 10.385 is, that's protection of adjacent properties, is fine. 10.386, in conformance with parking and sign regulations. We have a waiver of the parking and sign regulations in place already. Provides safe vehicular and pedestrian movement, and we've waived the traffic impact statement. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to note that you waived the sign plan requirement, but the sign that they're proposing is within the bylaw requirements, so you don't need to waive the requirements of the bylaw. I think they're allowed to have a sign up to 12 square feet.
Okay. Thank you. 10.388, adequate off-street space for loading and unloading, seems perfectly fine. 10.389, refuse and sewage disposal is fine. 10.390, flood is inapplicable. 10.391, protects historic and natural features. I think we find that it does comply with this requirement. 10.392, landscaping is good. 10.393, lighting is good. 10.394, steep slopes, scenic views, wetlands is inapplicable. 10.395, doesn't create disharmony.
What does that mean, Mr. Lawyer?
I think that we're really finding that this building is harmonious with respect to the terrain and architecture of existing buildings in the vicinity. Within the BG, okay, we're in RG, so that doesn't apply. 10.396, screening has been adequately addressed. 397, recreational facilities at Amherst College, they have plenty. 10.398, and in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. Any questions? So, we will need a motion to approve the special permit, the modification of the front yard setback requirement in Section 6.6, Table 3, Footnote A of the zoning bylaw. Mr. O'Keefe?
I have one question for Ms. Brestrop, which is whether or not we need to attach our standard conditions to this. I'm thinking the answer is no, since they don't apply in the case of a setback relief.
I think we would probably say that you wanted four copies of the final plans, but other than that, the landscape requirements wouldn't apply, the dark sky lighting wouldn't apply, and the planting of plants and maintaining them wouldn't apply.
But those will be attached to our site plan.
Those will be attached to your site plan review, so I think the only thing is the four.
Four sets of plans?
Four sets of plans, final plans.
And expires in two years if not substantially exercised?
Yes.
Mr. O'Keefe?
I move that the board approve special permit application, SPP 2012-0002, to modify the front setback requirement for an educational use under Section 3.330.0, Section 6.6, in Table 3, Footnote A of the zoning bylaw, subject to the conditions already described.
Kruger? Any further discussion? All in favor. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate your time, and good luck with the project.
Good luck with the chains when you measure them.
We'll have some of theirs out there tomorrow.
Either a chain or a chainsaw.
Take the gutter off.
All right. We'll take a two-minute break for anybody who needs it.
Huge.
That was easy.
Yes, I have. I have.
Harman?
Different people are doing South Pleasant Street.
I guess so. Harman Cox. Not Harman. Hold on, then, Harman. I called you Harman and Cox, I didn't see the Washington.
You begin bombing.
Ms. Ford, try to hold it down tonight.
Really? Jumping up and down.
All right, let's get started. Okay, thank you, everyone. This is a public hearing, which was originally scheduled for 8:00 PM. Site Plan Review 2012-6, M13239, 249 South Pleasant Street, brought by Amherst College. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised, and notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to a butters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on the proposed site plan. They're requesting site plan review approval to convert a single-family residence to a two-family residence under Section 3.321 of the zoning bylaw, map 14C, parcel 93, in the RG zoning district. Do any board members have any disclosures about this application? Hearing none, we can proceed directly to the applicant's presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Tom Hartman from Coldeman-Hartman Architects. I'm representing Amherst College through the permitting phase. Peter Jessup is the contractor who will be performing the work, so there may be some questions that he's better suited to respond to. From the site visit this morning, I passed out an updated plan, but I have a plan for everyone today. So, in that packet, there are some photographs. There is the lighting fixture with the dark sky hood on it, and there is a building plan that shows the basic subdivision of the house. Unit A is the existing front house. We'll divide the building into two parts. It's actually a four-bedroom. Currently, we're staying in a four-bedroom. I said today it was a three-bedroom, but that's not since changed. And this will be converted into a one-bedroom. Below this area is a two-bay garage. The alterations to the building are proposed to be a north porch, so that this building has two means of egress, while this building has its existing two means of egress. The driveway comes in, and we are proposing to add two parking spaces as required in this area right here. The property line comes like this off the page. That's the 10-foot setback. This is the 30-foot setback from the existing wetlands, approximately 30-foot setback, and the edge of pavement to the wetlands is approximately 44 feet. We have been in front of the Conservation Commission and have approval in hand for this, this area, and that is to be either asphalt or traprock gravel, and I believe currently it is proposed to be traprock gravel. So, with the parking area here, what we're proposing to do is to replace the existing floodlights with dark sky compliant floodlights in the packet there. This existing porch light remains. The new porch will have a porch light, and what we're proposing is a pathway, is to have the concrete paver or Goshen pathway meander up through the existing stairs, the existing shrubs be pruned back, and the stairs be replaced, and a pole with that same fixture be installed here at approximately eight feet. All of these would have occupancy sensors on them, with the exception of this one. And then, lastly, the existing plantings on the front, which there's a picture of in your packet, we're proposing to, and this would be a correction from the site visit report today, we discussed actually taking those four major shrubs, simply moving them eight feet forward into their new permanent location, and then using that eight-foot aisle between the building to repair the foundation wall, create a drainage trench, put in a trench drain, which is daylighted. So, that those shrubs would move forward rather than being putting, put back in the same place to create the same condition in the future. Any questions?
Ms. Brestrop?
I think maybe Mr. Hartman might explain the drainage situation at the front for those of you who weren't there. I don't think that it's completely clear what he was talking about with regard to drainage at the front of the building.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Right now, what happens is the slope draws water down into those plantings. It's placing bulk liquid water directly against the masonry foundation. The freeze-thaw cycle of that masonry foundation has significantly deteriorated, and we are proposing to rebuild a portion of that wall, that foundation wall, re-point it, and provide proper drainage so this doesn't occur in the future.
Thank you. I'll read the description of the site visit, which took place this morning at 249 South Pleasant Street. Several, let's see, five members of the board attended. Let's see. "This site is located on South Pleasant Street across from Orbrink and other Amherst College athletic facilities. Access to the property is gained by a short access road that runs parallel to South Pleasant Street and serves four properties. The site is surrounded by older homes, several of which are owned by Amherst College. To the north and behind the property, there's an undeveloped parcel that's also owned by Amherst College. The adjacent property to the south is not owned by Amherst College. This site is relatively flat and the street side falls away towards the backyard. An existing driveway on the north side of the house leads to the Tugar garage, under the rear portion of the house. There's ample room in the driveway for cars parked in the garage to turn around prior to exiting the property. The yard is well-tended and surrounded by large mature trees on three sides. There is a wetland that borders the property on the west side, as we heard, and a lawn southwest corner. I heard about the shrubs. The backyard is low, and the west side of the property appears to be poorly drained. This is a two-story wood frame structure built around 1830. Greek Revival includes gable end and doric columns, painted yellow with white trim, a good combination. Apparently, the rear portion of the house was a barn at one time, and it was converted to living space in the 1980s. The applicant is proposing to move, remove the wooden shutters on the south and north sides of the house and leave the vinyl shutters on the street side. The removal is related to the difficulty of de-letting the wooden shutters." The removal is related to the difficulty of de-letting the wooden shutters." They're proposing to divide it along its sort of natural dividing line, um, into a three-bedroom apartment and a one-bedroom apartment. And they're adding a second egress. The site plan revisit report says that there are no substantial modifications proposed for the exterior of the building, other than the removal of the shutters and the addition of the door and porch on the north side. They're adding two parking spaces opposite the garage doors. And at the site visit, other locations where parking, for parking were explored, including a location on the adjacent property, also owned by Amherst College. Again, there are drainage issues, um, oh, there's, this is a drainage problem at the front, east side of the house. Uh, water runs off the access road and sidewalk towards the house and into the basement. They're proposing to regrade this area at a foundation drain that will daylight into the south yard area. And they're moving the shrubs. We have some questions and comments that arose at the site visit. The first being, should the two new parking spaces be added at the south side of the property, as shown on the plan, or elsewhere, on or off-site? And I would query whether we can require them to be off-site. But would the applicant like to speak to that?
Um, at this time, the adjacent site is not available for discussion. My client has said no, they don't, they don't want to pursue an off-site option.
Okay. Where, okay, this is a question, um, if the two new parking spaces are located as proposed, where should the path from the parking spaces to Unit A be located? I believe you've addressed that question already. Is the access road controlled by Amherst College or the town of Amherst? Who plows it? Ms. Brestrop.
Um, it's a little unclear who owns it. It shows up on the GIS as being owned by the town. Um, however, when I spoke with Guilford Mooreing, the Superintendent of Public Works, he was under the impression that it was owned by Amherst College. I understand that Amherst College plows it.
Thank you. Should the new porch on the north side of the house include both egress doors? Or should there be two porches, as proposed? Would whoever asked this question like to elaborate on their reasoning? Ms. Kruger.
I asked the question. It was more just a question at the site visit. I was, um, trying to understand porch, porch, but I don't have a strong point to make about it.
Mr. Schreiber.
Um, one of, one of the photographs there shows how that porch, the existing porch, is an extension of the roof plane, and that's, that, that forms one half of the gable, um, which... Right here, you can see that existing roof plane continues off. So if that wasn't the case, having a shed dormer would be appropriate. But given the dimensional context, I don't think that's possible, or at least not elegant. So what we're proposing is an identical, separate porch directly adjacent, stylistically.
Thank you. That's actually helpful to s- see that on the picture. Mr. Schreiber.
But we don't have a, a drawing of that, or, there's, there's no drawing of that, right?
No.
So...
Well, it's shown on the, um, preliminary diagram.
I'll be happy to provide that information at a later date if necessary.
Oh, here.
There's my pencil. I could do that. Going, continuing with the site plan, uh, site visit, um, where will trash be stored?
Uh, the options for, for trash, and again, in the, in the maintenance plan, um, what is proposed here is that there are containers that are brought from the building up to the street. There's a hauler that is provided by Amherst College Rental. Um, and so, given one unit has a garage, and the other unit has no good place to put it, um, there are, really, I think, as I see it, two options. They could store, um, rubbish and recycle it under the deck, which is probably not the best option. Or alternatively, there's a small strip here between the driveway where those containers could be stacked up in the back of the house, out of the public view and not a nuisance to, uh, someone being on the direct, on the deck directly above them.
I'm sorry, can you point on the picture, picture of where that is, where that would be?
It'll be right in the back here.
I see. Uh, thank you. And then there was a question about whether the existing wooden shutter should be maintained. Um, I think the, was issued, I mean, that, that question was addressed in terms of de-letting. But should they be, the question being, should they be replaced with matching black vinyl shutters? Can you, again, pull up the photo and tell us which ones you're proposing to remove and leave behind?
This is the street face. These are existing screwed-on vinyl shutters. And what is being proposed, and, and the, and the motivation for this is, one of the purposes of this project is to make sure that they can rent this to families with young children. So de-letting is, is, is a primary goal here. Um, these are original, uh, shutters on the north, on the south and on the north side, as well as on the, um, on the west side. Yeah, on the west side. So, um, our proposal is to remove them and to not replace them.
Uh, yes, Ms. Ford.
I think it's going to change the look of this house significantly, take those shutters off. Has there been any attempt to draw it or, you know, do a Photoshop or something? I think, um, you know, we're going to get to the criteria and the historic, maintaining the historic character of this house. Um, I think it's going to change it significantly to take these shutters off. So, uh, ma- match what's on the front, uh, all-new vinyl shutters to, you know, I, you know, I understand the issue, but, um, I do think it's going to change the look of this significantly to take them off.
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Uh, yes, I was wanting to raise the question at the site inspection, and, um, the part about renting to families with children, the minute you take down all the lead shutters and put them in double bag and take them away, then that issue's off the table, except for all the lead paint that may be all over the house as well. So, um, I don't think the shutters are compelling interest for renting to children. Uh, but I agree with Ms. Ford, and, um, I think that, uh, shutters ought to be restored to the house, uh, whether they're vinyl or wood. Um, you know, there's two schools of thought on that, but, uh, from the road, you don't know that they're vinyl. Um, and they can be painted to, you know, to match, uh, and, and they're really not that prohibitively expensive, and they come in a number of styles. So, I agree. I think that the, uh, you know, e- even if you, even the street view isn't, it is, when, uh, when, you know, the leaves are out on the trees now, so we're, we're not seeing the house from all the, all the different views, and this is a, you know, an attractive, uh, Greek Revival house. It's, uh, I think it ought to, ought to look good when the dust has settled.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Yes, Mr. Crowder.
Uh, I disagree. I don't think the shutters are that important, and, and in fact, I would suggest if you want to maintain uniformity, I would take the shutters off the front as well.
That's why there's nine of us.
I'm just trying to see if there's any wreckage in the, in the historic form.
I think, um, it appears there's two schools of thought on shutters. And, um, in my own discussions with people in similar situations, I can verify that. I don't have an opinion one way or the other on whether they should be kept. I could get out my whiteout and see what it'd look like without them, but...
Yellow out.
Yes, yellow out. Um, okay, so, where were we? Alright. Okay, questions from the board? You may begin. Hearing none.
Questions or comments?
Questions, comments? Whatever you have.
So, I think, though, to me, the parking seems excessive in terms of not the number of spaces, but the amount of pavement for, for cars, with two cars being in the garage. It's really the, the, the additional parking is for, you know, two, um, the two new cars. But if you measure from the face of the garage, you know, the typical drive aisle, twenty-four feet, and then a typical parking space, eighteen feet, it seems much shorter than, I mean, it seems like you don't have to encroach as far into the lawn as shown on the drawings. So I would, I would hope that we would see a smaller parking area, which would also then, um, because I, I think that is a beautiful lawn back there.
Yes, please. Could you, I'm sorry, could you bring the mic a little closer, please?
Sure, I think you could, you know, this is drawn as eighteen feet. I think you could probably cut that down to maybe fourteen or fifteen, but not six or seven.
But how wide is the pavement now from the face of the garage to the face of the pavement?
I can te- I can scale it for you for a second, but I can tell you that if you're backing your car out, you need pretty much all of the paving that's there to do it well.
But if you, if you go down to the minimart, you only have twenty-four feet, right?
I'll, I'll give you a dimension in a second.
Yeah, yeah. Or if you go across the street to the, or hockey rink.
How do you use this thing, Steve?
Find your scale.
That parking area looks to be about thirty-two feet. So if I take twenty-four out of that, I have twelve, so...
Take twenty-four, you have eight.
Excuse me, yes.
Yeah.
So I have eight, so it's not enough to, you know, you have to, you have to add something to make this work. And...
So ten feet versus eighteen feet.
Right. And, and, and I, I would like to point out that, yes, I am counting the garages as my required parking spaces. However, it's very likely that an individual will not always place their car in the garage, at which point I think it, it gets very tight. And that is one of the reasons we're proposing traprock gravel as opposed to asphalt.
I don't follow that.
Traprock gravel's porous, as opposed to asphalt, which is impervious to...
Oh, so that it minimizes the impact of the extra paving, is what you're saying? Okay. Ms., Mr. Carson.
Do you know if any of the other people who live on that lane park in the lane overnight?
I've seen cars there numerous times, and if that was an option, I think it would be, um, a far superior option to doing any additional parking or lighting on the site whatsoever. If that is an option available to us, it is, is by far the better conclusion.
Does, I was just going to ask, does the town have any position about that? About us people parking in that lane overnight?
That is unclear. I did speak with the Superintendent of Public Works today, and he believes that Amherst College plows that area. So I think that he would not impose the parking ban on that access drive, but, um, there wasn't anything definitive about what, about our conversation. So I'm not completely comfortable that the parking ban wouldn't be imposed there.
I'm wondering about having that, um, clarified, and then come back to talk about the parking?
Well, Ms. Anderson.
I, I, I would be uncomfortable, uh, stating that the, uh, criteria for two parking spaces per unit, going that this is a two-family, that two of them are being out on the street. I think that, that the, uh, site ought to be able to accommodate the four cars, four parking spaces. However, I just think, regardless of who owns the street and who plows it, um, it just, it's, out front is not near, I guess it's near the front door for the, for the main unit, but, uh, appears that the side door is the main, the main, the main door. But I think if there's a two-unit, two-space per unit requirement, I don't think the road should be the answer.
Can I ask a question of our zoning subcommittee? The, uh, parking bylaw, or Ms. Anderson, anyone really, the, does the, our new parking bylaw have any effect on this?
Mm-mm, it's under file.
Mr. Schreiber.
I just want to point out that we just waived a parking requirement, basically two cars per unit? Or, we just waived a parking requirement for Amherst College based on institutional parking in the vicinity.
It's a different use.
Yeah, residence, residence hall versus single fam- well, two-family.
Um, I'll just say my piece, which is that I think that the addition of the traprock paving there appears to be appropriate to the site, and I'd be inclined to approve it as presented. Ms. Kruger.
I, I had wanted to make a comment about traprock versus asphalt, because it's come up a number of times. And, uh, the bylaw treats it as hardscape, so it doesn't differentiate between traprock and, uh, macadam or asphalt. And that, but I understand that it does drain, water does drain through the traprock, so it has the sound that it's more appealing to us. But once we approve this, an applicant can then, a year later, put asphalt over that traprock and does not need a permit. So we, we may as well, I figure, it performs so poorly over time with the plowing and stuff, people usually take their traprock and pave it over eventually. So I, I view the propos- any proposal that says traprock a- as sounding more appealing. I just envision it all as asphalt, because it, it...
I agree with you. I think, I think asphalt is, is a better material, mostly for the reason that it's quieter and, because when you live next to someone who's got a traprock driveway, you hear them crunching up and down every time they go and turn around, um, whereas asphalt is quiet. So I think that asphalt has a significant advantage over traprock in that sense. And, uh, that is to say, effect on adjoining properties. Mr. Schreiber.
So the parking that we approve is enforceable. So in other words, the, if we're approving parking in the garage and parking in that traprock area, that's where the parking has to be. So the option of parking elsewhere is, um, really not allowable. So in other words, I guess really what I'd like to see is what the, you know, what the worst possible case for the parking is. So in other words, if the parking is not planned to be in the garage, that you plan to have people park in front of the garage, then that's what we should be evaluating. But rather than, we shouldn't be, in other words, uh, does that make sense? The, the driveline is excess- excessively wide for, because visitors might come and park not in the garage. If that's the case, we should see where all of the anticipated parking is.
If I can clarify that. This is thirty-two feet, and I take a twenty-four-foot aisle, I get eight feet. So at a minimum, I'm going to have to do six feet here.
Second.
Which means eventually, they're going to park on the grass.
Brestrop.
Normal parking spaces are required to be eighteen feet long, and you can give a waiver to let them be sixteen feet long. So if there's eight feet, then you would need another ten feet in order to create a parking space. But it would still be only half as much paving as is shown in the plan.
Yes, Mr. Hartman.
In the event that the on-street parking was, in fact, owned by the college, I believe under Section seven oh one, it would be permitted to be used as parking, which, um, basically... under Section 701, it would be permitted to be used as parking, which basically states that all streets parking space is required here and shall be provided either on the lot with the principal use, or on any other associated premises within 800 feet. And there's no exemption there for residential. And I would also argue that if we add a 10-foot parking area, I'll eventually park on the street when I live there. So...
Ms. Brester?
My personal feeling is that the street is probably not owned by Amherst College, because there was another plan that was given to you, it's a survey plan, and it shows the front property line, and it looks like it's probably about 15 feet off the front of the building. So if that's the case, then even though Amherst College may plow the street, it looks like the town owns it.
So we, the town has informally outsourced the plowing of this street.
That's what it sounds like.
There is a sign on the street that says Amherst College Parking.
Ms. Anderson?
As a matter of practicality, if I was the lucky new faculty member to be in that first building, and the two means of egress, remember the front of the house facing the street has no door, and I have three loads of bags of groceries and two children and a bike, to park on the street, come down the driveway to that new porch entrance, or all the way down and around the driveway to come in the back, that's the other egress, is just not practical.
I think that there is an egress on the other side of the house that's close to the sidewalk.
I don't think it goes through to the front, though, Bruce.
Does it go through the front?
There's one here that's being added, and this is existing, there's a gate here.
There is, from the, from the street?
Yeah. There's, this is the street side, there's no door there.
Right.
But the main porch, which you can see in the photograph, on the south side, is here, and this is 88 feet, so this is approximately 20 feet or so. It's, it's certainly, I'm, I'm not exactly doing a good job arguing for my proposed plan.
Could you stand close to the microphone?
Sure, I'm not exactly doing a good job of arguing for my proposed plan, but I, I would argue that parking on the street may be easier to get into either entrance, as opposed to walking however you walk up a set of stairs to that main door.
I'm not inclined to pursue the street parking idea any further.
Okay.
Ms. Kruger?
Well, just to follow up on possibly reducing the paving and the, where you have the two spaces, what might become more of a hammerhead, if that were pulled back, would you envision relocating the proposed path to be more direct access to the, the side door in the front unit?
The options for the path with this tree, once you get past these steps, you could easily come along that direction, take these shrubs out entirely, and just make a more direct path in the, in, in that way as well, and...
I like that idea, too.
I forget who had that comment.
Yeah, I did.
While we're here, are there any questions or comments from the public? Sure, come on up to the microphone, identify yourself.
I, I don't know anything about this project, but just hearing about the shutters, I just wanted to pipe in with my personal opinion, which is that no shutters are better than vinyl shutters trying to look like historic shutters.
Oh, I, I forgot to ask you to identify yourself, sir. We, just for the record.
Yeah, my name is Van Kaner, Amherst resident.
Thank you. Duly noted. Okay, further planning board discussion. Hearing none, I suggest we close the public hearing.
I so move?
Further discussion, closing the public hearing, all in favor? Pastor Janusley, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Any final comments or questions from the board before we move to the site plan review criteria? So, maybe I'll just actually go through the development application report real quick. There are no dimensional variances or anything like that on this. The waivers being requested are landscape plan, lighting plan, soil erosion plan, sign plan, management plan, and traffic impact statement. It appears we have a management plan, so I think we can ignore that waiver. All right. The issues that have been raised, there's several, parking in driveway, we're looking at four spaces for two units, that's all acceptable under the zoning bylaw, but there's been some issues about the, whether there's too much space provided. The Concom has signed off on this as, as it is, there's no encroachment into wetlands issues. The proposed lighting, the new lighting will all be dark sky compliant, although actually there was a porch light proposed to be added, which I didn't ask about.
It's on the underside of the soffit.
Okay, like cans, okay. We may wish to consider whether additional lighting is necessary for the new parking spaces at the south side of the driveway. I think that you addressed that with the floods, correct?
There's a new floodlight on a pole, right here. These two are being replaced, the existing fixtures are being replaced, and again, that's the new fixture on the new porch.
Issues with the lighting? Ms. Anderson?
Just if they changed the path, then that pole wouldn't be necessary, the one by the southeast corner of the tree. If you change the path to the, between the tree and the house.
Okay.
Or, or it becomes relocated.
Okay, the next issue in the development application report is erosion control plan. The only changes to the, that would affect that would be the new parking spaces, and given that the Concom has already required that erosion control measures be installed, I'd be inclined to defer to the Concom on what types of erosion issues are caused by these parking spaces. Does anyone feel a need to weigh in on that? Yes?
We were advised to install silt socks.
During the construction?
Yes.
And were there any other mitigations after the construction is complete?
No.
And that was also permitted for asphalt? So you're going with traprock purely from a cost standpoint?
Yeah. Brief answer.
Okay. All right, thank you. If you could, I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
Sure. I'm Peter Jessup, and I'm the selected contractor for the project. I think the, the issue was primarily economic, but, you know, the TRG is, in fact, more permeable from a point of view of getting the water down through rather than concentrating it in one area, but...
Thank you, Mr. Jessup. Traffic impact statement, they've requested a waiver. Any, anyone not inclined to grant that waiver? Management plan, as I said, there's no need for a waiver. The management plan appears to be adequate, the only thing that's missing that we, you know, that we normally require with a management plan form is a submission of a sample lease, and in those leases, we've sometimes lately, of late, required that there be a provision of no lawn couches. Are these units proposed to be rented only to faculty and staff and not to students?
That's correct. Only to faculty.
Ms. Kruger?
I would probably be more comfortable if we're consistent for all our lease or management plan requirements, and not get into what type of resident, because things can change over time or whatever, I just, we might speculate there'd be less issues of a certain kind with one kind of resident or another, but it's a, to me, it's a rental property, and we should just be consistent across the board.
Then in that case, we should make a condition of this, that we receive a copy of the lease.
Or equivalent agreement, I don't know.
Whatever Amherst College uses in that context. We basically like to like, ask for that, we, we didn't ask for it the last time you came before us, but it occurred to me afterwards that, as I was looking over a previous application, that we almost always require a lease when there's a proposed building that's going to be proposed to be leased, so we'd like to see that. All right. The fire department has not yet submitted a report on this application, so this will be subject to fire department approval. Concom review is taken care of, engineer hasn't submitted comments, so this will be subject to town engineer approval. Architecture and historical significance, will the people more familiar with those aspects like to comment on that piece of it? Anyone? I'll read from the development report. Other than the addition of a 60-inch tall deck separation on the south side of the building, and a new egress porch and stairs on the north side, as well as shutters being removed, it appears that no exterior changes to the building are being proposed. Mr. Schreiber?
So that's a lot. I mean, I think that, that the removal of the shutters is a, is significant, so I would like to, personally, I, I fall on the side of the shutters. And I will be silent on the material of the shutters, but...
We're actually required to consider that sort of thing, because it's a location in the historic district, we have to consider the design review board criteria, which will cover that issue.
And I also am uncomfortable not knowing exactly what this porch looks like, so I'm not exactly sure how high that rises in my, but I, I think approval of the porch is required, and, I'll just stop there.
Yeah, I think we're missing, I think we're missing some information that we're going to need. Ms. Brester?
You could have a condition that requires Mr. Hartman to come back with a vision of what the porch is going to look like, for your review and approval.
Yeah, we'd like to see elevations, I think, of what the, what it'll look like when it's done, including with and without shutters and so forth.
With shutters, yeah.
With shutters. But we need to see it without as well.
We do?
For comparison.
I don't know, I thought we were...
Ms. Ford?
So I will say that, that it should be consistent, whatever it is, that it's either all shutters or no shutters. I, I think that, I think it, I think it is going to be odd to just see the front with shutters and the sides without, so it's going to be an either-or, and I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure about making it an absolute condition, I don't know, you know, one thought was to actually possibly go, sometimes it's better to just see in person, you know, in a situation like this, actually have the shutters taken off and go look, you know. I'm not, I, I don't know if that's appropriate, but that would, if, if, that's the way I'd like to see it.
Mr. Schreiber?
And we could review, we could refer this to the design review board also.
Well, we're going to review that criteria anyway.
We are.
We're about ready to go through those points, so...
But we could get a third-party opinion.
I don't pretend to be an expert on these things, so I'll... Mr. Carson?
Well, the house has always had shutters, so if we are going to be consistent with how it's looked in the neighborhood, I would say let's just require that it has shutters.
Mr. Crower?
I think the fact that, that they're hoping to rent it to families will override the aesthetic features, I, I think it's, it's very important that, that there not be that kind of a problem, there, I mean, other, obviously, there's going to be other lead problems, but let's not pile it on, I think.
I have to say, I'm generally opposed to shutters, but not for any aesthetic reason, but because they harbor hornets. And when you have shutters, you have hornets, and so that's, in my mind, why a lot of shutters get taken down, because otherwise you get to have somebody come in every year, take the shutters off and scrape the hornets out. It's a pain in the neck. So functionally, I think the house, you know, it's easier to maintain without the shutters, but I understand the concerns of members of the board with respect to the shutters. What we have before us is a proposal to remove the shutters from everything but the front of the house, and to leave the existing vinyl shutters on the front of the house. That's the proposal that's before us. I am sensing some discomfort with that general scheme. We'll come back around to it. And there's, finally, there's a waiver for the landscape plan. They're not proposing to add any landscaping, the pictures we have are in the winter, so it's kind of hard to tell. Was anyone who was at the site, can you comment on whether the existing landscaping is attractive and/or appropriate? Mr. Crower represents that it's very attractive and appropriate. All right. I would suggest that further comments be addressed in the context of the site plan review criteria, unless anyone wants to just speak now. Please do. Ms. Kruger?
I realize we've taken almost every aspect of what we're being asked to approve, except for the conversion, and talked about making it a condition. It seems like, you know, rather, we already closed the public hearing, so we can't go back and then ask for more information to comment during a continuation, but I was kind of finding it ironic that almost every aspect of this is probably going to change and come back to the board, except for the approval of conversion from a one, one to a two.
Duly noted. Ms. Brester?
If the board has questions about things that came up during the public hearing, you may ask those questions even after the public hearing has been closed, you just can't delve into new things. So if there are specific questions that you have about something that Mr. Hartman said, you can feel free to ask him a specific question about that, but...
Well, if I could just follow up on my point.
Yes, please do.
I'm just, I was just thinking, and my inclination would be, you know, come back to a subsequent meeting with a new site design, showing the parking, the sidewalk, possibly relocated lighting, showing the entry that we haven't seen, and all those, you know, we, we've pulled this apart, I'm sort of inclined to have it come back, but that doesn't make sense, because we closed the public hearing, and I think we have to deal with all of it as conditions.
Well, we could, is it, I don't, I don't know the rule, but is there any reason we can't just reopen the public hearing?
You can if it's the same night.
So if we reopen the public hearing and continue it, we don't have to, we can, we can then address these in the, in a, in a full context, rather than trying to make conditions? Mr. Schreiber?
So my inclination is that the, really what we're talking about are really adjustments, so they're really not, you know, deal breaker, that they're really, so I think that there are a lot, are a lot of conditions, but I think we often have a lot of conditions, and I think that, that generally, I think that things are in, you know, decent shape, so I'd be very comfortable just forging ahead and, and not continuing.
I'm certainly okay, do we have a, sort of a consensus about whether we should just proceed and finish this tonight? And give conditions, Mr. Carson?
I proceed and give conditions.
All right, so that's what we'll do. And, Ms. Kruger, given that you have, seem to have a lot of those in your mind, would you care to go through the, and speak to... you care to go through the, and speak to, add conditions as I go through the criteria?
Sure, please, other members join.
Alright. Alright. Okay, so we will proceed. These are the site plan review criteria under section 11.24 of the zoning bylaw. 11.240, general is 2400, conformance with all appropriate provisions, the bylaw, fine. 2401, protection of town amenities and abutting properties minimizing detrimental or offensive actions, I think not applicable. Protection of abutting properties from light, air, noise, vibration, any issues with that? Okay, that's good. Adequate recreational facilities, open space and amenities. There's some nice wetlands nearby that kids can play in. Catch frogs and so forth. I'd say that satisfies the criteria. Hockey rink across the street. Protection of, okay, environmental, protection of, this is under environmental now, not the building. Unique or important natural, historic, or scenic features. I think that's not applicable in this case. Refuge disposal, the bins will be parked probably beside the house. Sewage disposal, we will be requiring the town engineers sign off on this, as far as sewage and water. And as well as drainage, which is 2413. 2414, landscaping, it's gonna be essentially as-is, no changes. 2415, soil erosion plan, is gonna be a waiver. Any objections to that waiver? Protection of aggluteration properties, minimizing intrusion of air and water, et cetera, no problems there. Lighting, we have a good representation of site lighting under 2417, 2418, flooding. Now, flooding, we're awaiting the, well, actually, the Concom has weighed in on the issue of water on the site, and they seem satisfied, but we are waiting for the town engineer. 2419, wetlands. Okay, 242, design. At this point, we jump across into the design review board guidelines, which are section 3.2 of the zoning bylaw.
Excuse me?
Yes, Ms. Brester.
Are you going to now review the design review board guidelines and then come back to the site plan review guidelines, or...?
Well, we can do it either way. Does it seem, am I doing this illogically? Because that was what I was going to do.
For the purposes of consistency in the report and the minutes, it probably makes more sense to continue on with the site plan review criteria and then go to the DRB?
Will do. Going back to the design, the site plan review, 2421, reasonably consistent with respect to setbacks, parking, and landscaping entrances with surrounding buildings and development. Anyone present at the site plan visit have a comment on that problem? Okay, that's good. Avoid steep slopes and flood plains. Again, we have the Concom on that issue, and I'm satisfied that they can handle that. 2423 is inapplicable. 2424, screening, we're not adding any screening. The rolling things for trash will be outside, apparently, but so are half of them in Amherst. 243, traffic and parking. Convenience and safety of vehicles and pedestrians is okay. Curb cuts, inapplicable. Parking spaces, bike racks, sidewalks. Where will people store their bicycles?
The unit with a garage would store their bicycle in the garage. Unit A, adjacent to the deck in the back, where a bike rack could be provided, or a single dwelling unit? Yeah, under the deck would be the most logical place.
Comments from the bike contingent? Adequate, adequate, okay. Access to adjoining properties is fine. 2434, inapplicable. 2435, inapplicable. 2436, traffic impact report, proposing to waive that. Any problem with that? That's that. Now we're going to the design review board criteria. Ms. Brester.
I just wanted to clarify something. I think the reason that there was a confusion is because the site plan review criteria call for review of DRB criteria in certain instances, but this case doesn't fall into those instances.
Oh, it doesn't?
No. The reason that you're reviewing the design review board criteria is because it's a two-family house, and currently, any two-family houses need to be reviewed under the design review board standards and criteria. That's a new change to the bylaw that just came about within the last year or so. So, just like you did for 96 North Hampton Road, this is required now for any two-family house.
Alright, thank you very much for clarifying that. I was, obviously, I was off-base on the reason for going through this, so thank you. Okay, the purpose of the design review board criteria are to preserve and enhance the town's cultural, economic, and historical resources by providing for a detailed review of all changes in land use, the appearance of structures, and the appearance of sites which may affect these resources. The review procedures are intended to enhance the social and economic viability of the town by preserving property values and promoting the attractiveness of the town as a place to live, visit, and shop. Two, encourage the conservation of buildings and groups of buildings that have aesthetic or historic significance. Three, prevent alterations that are incompatible with the existing environment, or that are of inferior quality or appearance. And four, encourage flexibility and variety in future development. Okay, 3.204, I would just like to point out that the, these guidelines guide us, but they are not inflexible and are not to discourage creativity, invention, or innovation. We are specifically precluded from mandating any official aesthetic style or imposing the style for any particular historical period. Okay, general principles, 3.20401. Every reasonable effort shall be made to preserve the distinguishing original qualities of building, structure, or site and its environment. That's reasonable, the effort. The removal or alteration of any historic material or architectural features should be avoided when possible. And that brings us to the issue of shutters. Ms. Ford.
So, I recognize the issue here, and, you know, if you go down to number three, you know, that we want things to be conserved and preserved where it's feasible, where it's feasible and appropriate, alright? So we're talking about the cost of doing certain things. So I look at this facade and I say, "Well, what if, what if one or two of these plasters on the front of the house were rotted out by termites? Would we be asking that those be replaced when they're integral to the character and the look of this house?" So that's the, that's the kind of, you know, I don't have a specific answer here, but to me, it's the same category of issue when we're reviewing these things. So, I put it out there that way because I think we're gonna be seeing this more and more, and I don't wanna be the one who's always saying, you know, "We gotta spend the money," but, but, but we do need to determine what's considered critical to the appearance, to, you know, maintain the historical character, and what's not.
So, in a perfect world, we're asking that these be replaced with wooden?
Well, the issue is, is the issue is taking them off and de-letting them properly so they could be put back on. Is that, am I correct in that?
They're also in poor shape structurally, as opposed to the previous application with 96 North Hampton, the shutters were sound, so we propose there to take them off, paint them, and put them back on, correct?
Actually, I think they were gonna be disposed of in entirety.
Well, we better check that.
Which, sorry, which ones are you talking about?
96 North Hampton.
Oh, 96 North Hampton.
I believe they're in good, those have black shutters.
Those are in good shape, those are gonna stay.
Yeah, they're staying.
Well, that's not how it was presented here. It was presented here that the de-letting was the issue.
Well, it's, I mean, that exacerbates the cost of it, but there's, there's more work to do on these shutters than previously, and in my judgment, when I looked at them, I thought, "Well, the basis of an application should be this because it's the least onerous." So I'm gonna leave it to you to make your determination aesthetically, because apparently, it's your decision. What's, so what's, I mean, what's your professional opinion? My professional and personal opinion is screwing vinyl shutters on is fantasy. And vinyl isn't material as one I professionally avoid.
Are these shutters hanging on the original metal hooks?
Yes.
Those hooks are hard to remove. In my experience.
So here's the, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
So the dilemma is, I agree that screwing in fake vinyl shutters to replace original wooden shutters is goofy, but that still leaves on the table either new or rebuilt wooden shutters that...
There's what, 2468, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18?
There's quite a few of them. There's a lot of them.
Twenty or thirty?
Which speaks to, you know, again, it being a significant element on this house. So I just, I, you know, again...
There's forty of them.
Forty pairs. Forty pairs?
Forty individual shutters. Forty individual shutters.
Twenty pairs.
What does a shutter cost?
Wooden shutters, I'm guessing they're gonna be between eighty and a hundred dollars, eighty and a hundred dollars a pair. And then there's the cost of painting, and, I mean, it's not inconsequential.
We're not entitled to consider cost anywhere in here, but you're talking somewhere between four and eight thousand dollars, probably. Ms. Kruger.
I was wondering if we might consider a condition that I think Ms. Ford alluded to, which is having a site visit when the shutters are down, and then coming up with a final decision, and also leaving it up to the applicant to come back with some suggestions. If not vinyl, then what are the options on wood replacement versus repairing the ones that are there? I personally think in this particular building, in this instance, it is integral to the design, the historic character, the streetscape, and on balance, I don't think that that particular cost item is huge compared to other things that can happen in a construction project, you know, having to redo a drainage feature or something. I mean, I'm not saying it's inconsequential, but I don't think, on balance, that it's an inappropriate expense for a house that has this historic history.
Mr. Carson.
I would agree, and also that it's in a very visible location, and it's a very major road coming into town. It's not on an obscure side street. It's something people have been used to seeing for years, as it is. And to suddenly change it very greatly, I think that could be a mistake.
So we can require that these shutters be replaced with, or rebuilt, wooden shutters? We're entitled to require that as a condition of this site plan review.
I was gonna say, it wouldn't impact our construction, it would not impact our construction sequencing or schedule if you were to require us to remove the shutters and notify you as soon as they're down, so you could visit the site and see what they looked like. We'd be happy to do that, and if, as part of the conditioning of the approval.
Would you be satisfied with that?
It's not onerous or exceptional.
I think it's a really good first step in resolving this and being able to see it in the context of all the other houses, because there are several houses in that row that have the same shutters going three ways around, and I just, I think it's important that everybody see that and see it in context without them.
Mr. Schreiber.
So I'm gonna suggest a slightly different condition in which still involves Kathy Ford, but it's the design review board that makes that, that goes out to the site and makes this determination.
I see Ms. Kruger shaking her head over there. Yes?
I'd like to object to engaging another town body in this decision. If you can provide a decision this evening, it will facilitate the project, and I'm concerned that that procedure may not allow that. I don't know, but you're gonna, if I may offer, this is gonna come before you many, many times, so if it should be a design review board process, take it off the planning board's table in the bylaws and make it a requirement of the design review board. I would have already been there as of today.
I'm inclined to agree with you that this is our responsibility. So I'm also inclined to make a condition that, as Mr. Jessup suggested, the shutters be taken down, and at that time, we'd be notified to go and make a site visit.
And not just the sides, but I think you have to take the front off, too. I feel strongly it's either or. It's either all shutters or no shutters.
Okay, we have agreement from the applicant on that. Okay, Ms. Brester.
Do you want to include in that condition that the existing shutters be preserved until you've made your decision?
Yes. That's a yes. Alright, thank you, everyone, for a collaborative solution. That's very good. Let me see if I can figure out where we were. Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Alright, the other issue with that was the porch, that we need to see the design of the porch.
Actually, you know, I think, if I could, I think I could address that pretty clearly. There's this side porch right here. The, for those of you who are at the site today, I think we went over that, but this window here is going to come out, and there'll be a door there, identical to this door, and there'll be a porch, identical in form and style and sizing and roof details, identical, identical, with the one small exception that it will project about nine to 12 inches further out in order to provide a code-compliant landing at that new door. This current landing on this is only about two feet or two feet, two inches, and we really need a three-foot landing, so the other, the posts on the new porch will project out about eight, nine to 12 inches further than this one, so, and actually, I think will be a little more interesting than they were side by side. You'll get, one porch will, the one porch will come out a little, and the other one steps back just a little bit, but it'll be identical to that porch from a design point of view, if that's useful.
Thank you, Mr. Jessup. Is, and I'm, I see that as...
And we'd be happy to provide detailed drawings of that as a condition.
Okay, excellent.
As well.
Detailed drawings are good. Mr. Schreiber.
So on the issue of the porch, I'm, I know that we're approving this on the condition that we actually see the porch, but I wouldn't bind yourself to making it identical, identical. In other words, I think, it doesn't appear to have been drawn yet, so I would rather keep it open as to actually what it, so don't, I'd rather actually not bind them to identical, identical, but actually come back with, yeah.
With an elevation showing the porch designs.
I'd like to clarify, we are not proposing that the new porch have shutters.
I'm not sure if that'll be acceptable. I'm not sure if that'll be acceptable. We may require shutters on the porch. No sofas on the lawn, though. All right, moving on. We are gonna ask that you come back with a drawing of the porch. And you might consider extending the existing one to come into code, even though you don't have to.
Yeah.
Make it a lot nicer for the residents, to have room to get inside with their groceries.
Have we got that under control with the building department?
Another way to know.
Yeah.
Number four, contemporary design shall not be discouraged. That's not being proposed. Number five, um, uh, improve the quality, appearance, and usability of existing buildings. This building appears well-suited to becoming a duplex, given its structure. Okay, that was three point two zero four zero. We're now on to three point two zero four one. At a minimum, we must consider the following standards. Height is inapplicable. Proportions, uh, and relationships of height to width between windows, doors, signs, architectural elements. We've asked the applicant to come back with extra drawings. Three, relation of structures and spaces, that's not changing. Four, shape of roof, stores, and windows, design elements, architectural style and character. Again, we've asked for additional drawings. Five, landscaping is acceptable as is. Six, scale is inapplicable. Seven, directional expression is, uh, inapplicable. Architectural and site details are acceptable, except as otherwise conditioned. And signs, no signs are proposed. All right, so... Development application report. We're gonna need a motion that incorporates waivers for landscape plan, lighting plan, soil erosion plan, sign plan, and traffic impact statement. Conditions that the applicant come back with. Elevation's showing the porch. They're gonna pull the shutters off and give us a call so we can come see it. We need, uh, in-town engineer approval. We need fire department approval. What did we decide about the path and the new parking area? Were we just gonna prove it as is?
No, I don't think so.
Ms. Brestrop.
Would you like them to bring back a revised site plan showing the revised parking as we've discussed or as you've, as you've discussed and the pathway?
That's exactly what I meant to say. Anything else that I've missed?
A copy of the lease as part of the management plan.
Copy of the lease, which should include a no lawn couch provision. Anything else? Mr. O'Keefe.
I just have a question as to what our procedure is going to be after we view the building with the shutters off. Is that gonna come back to this board to then have a discussion and a vote on which way we're gonna go on the shutters?
Yeah, I think, I think it needs to come back with photos, really, because not all of us are gonna make the site visit. And then we'll decide whether the condition has been satisfied, right? Or whether to require shutters or not, really, because it's design review. Uh, would anyone care to make such a motion?
Someone.
Wrong board, Peter.
What he said.
Are you making that motion, Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
I'll second.
Mr. Rosnoy seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, folks. Thank you very much for your considerations. All right, um... I'm gonna go slightly out of order here and, and go directly to new business. We'll do old business after. We have a lot release request for lots two, forty-five, forty-six, fifty-two, and sixty-five in Amherst Hills subdivision eighty-nine dash thirteen. This is Tofino Associates, um, coming for us. Hi.
Hi, I'm Ted Parker, the president of Tofino Associates. And we've made this request. I, I looked in reviewing this just now, I realized that, I'm embarrassed to say, there's a typographical error in the lot numbers, and there's also an error in the map. But I think we have bigger, bigger issues to discuss about, um, releasing the lots and, and, uh, performance guarantees, so...
You can proceed. Uh, Ms. Brestrop?
Um, you should have all received a, um, cost estimate. I think I put it on your desk. The DPW, Jason Skiles, and his people have come up with a cost estimate for finishing the infrastructure on the roadway, on the roadways in Amherst Hills subdivision. And, um, in the past, the planning board has required, once a developer gets to a certain point, and a certain number of lots have been released, that, um, the developers start to put money in escrow to finish up the, uh, infrastructure. And, um, sometimes what the planning board has done is take the total amount of money that would be required to finish the road and divide it by the number of lots that are still to be released. And each time a developer comes before the board, um, requests that, um, a check for that amount be, um, put in escrow with the town for release of the lot. And then as, um, as the developer finishes the road bit by bit, he can request that some of that money be returned to him. And then at the end of the project, when the whole thing is all finished and you're satisfied that the roadways are up to par and so is the town engineer, then the rest of the money can be released. So that's the way things have been done in the past. There have been discussions about the way this project should proceed because this is a very large project. It's very old. It's been around since the eighties. It's been developed bit by bit to at least two different developers. And there's been discussion, um, with at least one board member and staff about the potential of releasing, um, you know, a certain number of lots in addition to the fifty percent. We're, we're right about the fifty percent point now. And because these lots are so valuable and not, uh, holding escrow funds until, um, later on in the process. I had a conversation with the town engineer today, and he, um, recommends against that procedure. He feels that, you know, this project has taken so long and there's so much that still needs to be done that it would be better if the planning board were to require, um, some amount of money to be put in escrow. I understand that Mr. Parker has a different kind of proposal for you. So I will, uh, if, with your permission, let him, um, explain what he is proposing. But I just wanted to let you know what the town's ordinary, traditional policy has been.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brestrop, for that, uh, good, uh, explanation. And would you like to let us know what you're considering?
Yes. Uh, there are a total of seven, even though it shows seventy-three lots on the map, three of those lots are actually in Belchertown. So there are only seventy lots that are, uh, in Amherst. So I, I assume that those are the only seventy lots that we're talking about. Seventy-one, two, and three are over the Belchertown line. And you can't see the extension of Linden Ridge Road on this partial map that was submitted with this application. But Linden Ridge Road ends in a cul-de-sac, and there are additional lots out to the cul-de-sac. There are, of the seventy, we currently have, I believe, thirty-three released. And I, I wasn't completely up to speed about the requirement for, uh, um, surety that the project would be completed. Rather than putting money in escrow, I think that we would probably suggest that we provide a three-party agreement with our lender, which is a form of agreement between the town, uh, the developer, and the bank who's responsible for the, who holds the mortgage on the property. That they, i- it's an agreement that ensures the town that in the event that the developer doesn't perform at some point, that the bank is responsible for providing the funds to complete the project. And the town can, can exercise that option. And I, it's, I'm, I, I'm waiting for a word from our attorney, but I believe that that's an option that we're allowed by statute, um, other, rather than, um, providing a, a performance bond in escrow. It, it functions the same. It just, from the, from the developer's side, it's a little less expensive because it doesn't tie up that large amount of money for the period of time that it might take to complete the project. And it would be great if we under, if we completely could predict what the absorption rate, what the, what the sales rate on these lots are gonna be, but we don't, we don't really know what the sales rate's going to be. We have no control over the market. So we're only developing them as the market dictates that there's a, there's an actual demand for them. I'll share with you our plans for the, for the, for the next couple of years. I think that, uh, right now, we're in the process of getting estimates from contractors, from a number of site contractors, to complete the loop, um, to connect Concord and Linden Ridge, uh, not all the way up to the cul-de-sac, but just to complete the loop. It's my understanding that when Doug originally, I mean, I, for those of you who knew Doug Cole, when Doug originally made the decision to stop the road, uh, the road, Concord Road stops just about at the border of lot fifty-five and fifty-six. And Linden Ridge Road stops just past the border of sixty-four and fifty-seven. And each of those decisions was predicated upon the longest dead-end road you could have without, uh, having to put in a turnaround or a hammerhead. So, um, we are actually beginning to run out, with, sales have picked up a little bit, and we are running out of a sufficient quantity and variety of lots at different price points to, to interest buyers. So we are interested in putting into, onto the market all of the lots that would be available by completing that loop. And in an ideal world, that will happen, um, that those will be on the market for the spring real estate season in two thousand and thirteen. So we're hoping to get that done and paved, first coat paved, and the sidewalks in by the end of the paving season in two thousand and twelve, which traditionally is somewhere around Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Um, is your banker here tonight?
No.
And who's your banker?
Greenfield Savings.
And have they represented that they're comfortable with signing a three-party agreement on this?
They've agreed in principle, but I, we didn't get the, we actually didn't get the estimate from, um, from DPW till today at four, I think around four o'clock. And, uh, I, I don't think, I, I did a cursory, I was at meetings all day. I didn't get a chance to look at it on anything other than my iPhone. So I was scrolling around quickly looking at the, looking at the spreadsheet. It doesn't seem unreasonable to me. There's a couple of questions I might ask Jason about, just because, um, the, the cost of as-built drawings, I, I, I may not, it may be done for, for less than the town engineer was estimating. And there's one, I think the total was eight fifteen, um, which works out to, uh, at thirty-five lots. It works out to like twenty-three, three hundred. Is that right? Twenty, something like that. Someone that does the math. It's about twenty-two thousand dollars a lot. And the other question I had, there was a, there was a general lump sum devoted to an unspecified excavation process that I'm not sure, I'm not exactly, he might just be using that as a contingency, which is a reasonable thing to do, and didn't specify exactly what the excavation process is. The other parts of the spreadsheet were pretty clear. He had, uh, paving, both base coat and finish coat. In some areas, he had sidewalk base coat and finish coat. He had berm. And he had, uh, borrow, in order to borrow, it just means trucking in fill to do the grading on those portions of the road, which are not yet graded in preparation for paving. But that one, so, uh, you know, there's a couple of numbers I might just talk to Jason about in, in the coming days and work out, see if, what, what he was thinking. And then compare that to the estimates that we'll be getting, that are in the process of being prepared. But in general, I think that the, the number seems pretty reasonable to me. It's in the ballpark. And once, I, I guess the, the easiest thing to do would be to present you with a three-party agreement draft so you could review it and understand what it is and check with town council to make sure that it's an acceptable method of ensuring completion of the project. But you can imagine that rather than us having to take eight hundred thousand dollars and put it into an escrow account where it sits and does nothing except, um, collect interest, a, a three-party agreement just, uh, we, we, we pay the bank a fee each year as, as the process goes forward, um, until, uh, uh, until the project's complete or until the three-party agreement is exercised by the, by the town because for one reason or another, the town feels like they want to finish the project.
I guess from our point of view, just the, um, the lawyer in me, if I was trying to negotiate something like this, is saying to me that the only leverage we have over you right now is the release of these five lots. Not that that's really how I'm thinking about this, but that's really the issue today because we're not, since we don't have a three-party agreement in front of us, um, and, and you're not proposing to just write a check. You know, really, all that's on the table today is the lot release.
Right. And I think that I submitted the lot release and then found out after the, uh, this, the request, and then found out after about the requirement for, for surety to complete the project. So what I would suggest is that I would amend the lot lease request and only request a release of two additional lots rather than these five. And that would bring us to exactly fifty percent. It would be thirty-five of seventy. And I don't know if the bylaw requires it at fifty percent or more than fifty percent.
Ms. Brestrop.
There's no bylaw that governs this. It's just been the practice of the planning board. And so you can decide on any number of lots, but fifty percent is the traditional number that you have, um, where you've stopped and said, how much is it gonna cost to finish this? So you would be within the tradition of the planning board to approve, uh, two more lots if Mr. Parker were to come back and, um, request those prior to arranging this three-party agreement.
If I'm looking at this correctly, the typo is that lot forty-six is an, is already been released?
Yes. But it, it, that should be lot fifty-six. Should be lot fifty-six. And in fact, lot fifty-six is not cross-hatched on the map. And it should be.
Okay. And which two do you want approved?
Sixty-five and fifty-six. So I would withdraw the request to release two, fifty-two, and forty-five.
And you can come right back to us as soon as you have that three-party agreement in place, right?
Right.
Um, anybody on the, else on the planning board have comments? Ms. Kruger?
I had a question. Um, the number that we got from the town engineer, the eight hundred and something thousand to finish, I'm assuming, but I want to be sure, includes the completion of the Loop Road. So, um, you can't really, um, develop any of those lots without completing, at least, without completing the Loop Road. So you wouldn't really be looking for, I, it sounds like that number would go down significantly. Once you put the loop in and you...
I think I can answer the question. In other projects in other municipalities that we've used a three-party agreement, when a portion of the project that the original three-party agreement addresses is then complete, the three-party agreement is amended so that it only refers to those portions of the project which remain incomplete. Does that make sense?
Yes. But, and just so, even if the five lots, even the five lots that we're, we're originally looking at are all within the area where the road is actually already completed.
That's correct. That's correct. Not, not, not wholly completed.
Right, there's others...
There's no finish coat of paving.
Oh, there's no fin...
There's no finish coat of paving anywhere. There are those parts that are paved, there's sidewalk, base coat, and berm.
I actually don't have a problem doing the, the five lots. I mean, the 50% is a rough number. It's clear that you won't be able to build on the rest of these until you finish the loop anyway. I don't, just for myself, I don't, I, I think that applicants' proposal to, for a third-party, three-party agreement, I mean, if it doesn't pass muster, then you can always go back to the escrow, but it seems unlikely. I think I've, I've heard of these things as well, and it seems to me that it would protect the town's interest in completing this project. I also would like to, you know, I'd like to see this completed, so I'm not inclined to hold back releasing these lots either.
We share your interest in completing the project.
I thought you might. Any comments from the board or Ms. Brester?
I think it would be helpful if you did wait until you received a revised certificate of performance and a revised map before you went ahead and approved these, just so that we can keep track of everything in an orderly fashion, because this is very confusing as it is. So, that would be my advice to you, that you'd wait until the next planning board meeting to do this. And in the meantime, Mr. Parker will give us the paperwork, and you have told him that you would be, at least, Mr. Weber has told him that he would be willing to release the five lots. And if you can, you know, have consensus on that, then Mr. Weber, Parker could go ahead and produce the paperwork. But to do this tonight with, you know, material that is not correct, I think would confuse things in, in my, my office.
Can you, just to be clear, that you're asking that we not release any lots tonight? Is that correct?
I am asking that, yes.
Can I?
Ms. Kruger?
I'm, I'm just going to ask Mr. Parker, maybe you're going to tell us, if you have sales pending and we're going into construction season, that could delay release of a lot and a potential project going forward in a way that could, could be harmful. So, I wanted to ask you if that's...
I, I was going to request a little forbearance and ask if, if it's approved contingent upon me providing you with a corrected application, or a request, a corrected letter and map.
Ms. Brester?
What has to be done is when you approve it, you sign the document. All of you who voted have to sign it, and you would be signing a document that's not correct unless you wanted to somehow, you know, mark it up.
Actually, the signature page is correct. It's the other pages that aren't.
It is in fact, correct.
But the map and the other page are not.
Okay, so if the signature page is correct, then I think I've...
Recordable document, the certificate of performance doesn't have the same typo. It does not have the typo.
No, it doesn't.
It has the correct lot numbers in there.
Yes, it does. Mr. Crowner?
You mentioned leverage, and so I, I agree with that. I, I would prefer to approve two lots now and wait, wait to see the agreement.
That seems like a compromise that was even suggested by the applicant, so if we were to do that, we would be approving Lots 56 and 65 tonight, and asking that we come back with the completed three-party agreement approved by town council and the bank, and then we would release the rest of them. Am I correct?
So, so just to be clear, you're, you're suggesting that, that release two regardless of receiving the three-party agreement, and then the remainder would be released upon review and adoption of the three-party agreement?
That's, yeah, that's, that's what I'm proposing. Any comments, questions?
I just wonder if you could get a sense of the board, how many people are comfortable with the five lot, how many would like to go with a more conservative two lot? Sort of like the shutter issue where we...
Term of opinion.
Generally, we don't do straw polls, but I think if I were to say, you know, I mean, traditionally, we have to address these through motions, but I'm fairly risk tolerant. Anybody, if, if there's, if there was a motion to, if there was a motion to release all five lots tonight, how many heads would I see nodding in agreement? I think there's, one, two, three, about half.
I guess I feel a little uncomfortable about the whole package without seeing the security agreement, the three-party agreement.
I think we're looking at two.
Okay.
And the remainder upon the agreement being signed, so...
So, my question then is about process. You don't, in that case, you don't have something that can be signed tonight? So then, I will be required to...
Well, no, we can cross out the...
The reference is all five?
We'll just cross out the ones we're not approving. That's fine.
And still record it with the crossed out?
Yeah. If you're satisfied with that, it would work in any context I can think of.
Who's going to be the one to cross out?
What's that?
Who's going to be the one to cross out? Mr. Weber? And then, would you, once you take your vote, all of you will sign it?
I'm crossing out everything except for Lots 56 and 65.
That's correct.
Mr. Crowner?
I move to release Lots 56 and 65.
Any further discussion?
Just a question.
Yep.
Is it true that the certificate of performance is the only relevant document here, and so the typos in the cover letter and the changes that would be required on the map, which is just explanatory material, are those irrelevant, or do we need to...
I think that we need to have the correct ones submitted, but we have, we have the correct, the lots are numbered correctly on the map, it's just they're cross-hatched incorrectly. And the, the letter is just a letter.
Yep.
So, I don't see a problem with that.
I'm happy to have you not give me the recordable document until I give you the corrected map. We'll both let go at the same time.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think it's a, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
It'll take me a day...
It's really up to staff on this one, if she's willing to accept the map after the fact.
I am.
Okay.
It'll take me a day or two to get the map, because the, the person who does it is on the West Coast, it just happens to be somebody who moved out there. The, the letter I can have revised and submitted tomorrow.
All right. We have a motion.
I'll second.
Who, who moved? I'm sorry.
Mr. Crowner moved.
Mr. Crowner, yes, that's right. And Mr. Rosnoy, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the release of Lots 56 and 65? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I'm going to pass this down to Mr. Rosnoy to sign first, and we'll pass it back up, signing in order, so we don't get mixed up. Moving on with our agenda, it's getting very late. I thank everyone for their time. We have to sign some attorney general forms, and we have to deal with a scheduling issue.
I'm going to ask if they have...
Oh, yes. Can you come forward and say why you're here?
I'm Gary Lanfer.
You've got to use the mic, sorry.
I'm Gary Lanfer, I'm representing Van Keener. We have a one, one lot A&R on Market Hill Road that we're seeking endorsement of.
Sure.
It's, it's a re-subdivision of a, of a plan that I previously did for Van back in 1994, and also in 2004, we did another revision. As, as you can see, what he was hoping to do was have a minimum-sized lot, which would encompass the garage...
We can't see, you have to show us.
Oh, you don't have the plans?
You can continue with your explanation, though.
Okay. What he was seeking to do here is just have a minimum-sized lot cut out around his, his dad's old house, House Number 460, which would encompass the garage, which was 15 feet high, so he kept a 15-foot offset, and a chicken coop, which is 13 feet high, but I kept 15 feet for conformity, and then across the back. For total frontage of 279.93 and a lot area of 1.093 acres.
Ms. Brester?
I'm going to refer to this as being on Market Hill Road.
Yes.
You mentioned that. And passing around a locus map that shows where the lots are, and then this is the A&R. So, what are we being asked to do with this?
The remainder of the, of the land has a frontage of 310 feet and 7.97 acres.
Any special concerns we ought to know about?
I think so. As, as we guide Stu.
Questions from the board? I know you're still showing it around.
I just ask the purpose of this again, the purpose...
Yeah, could you tell us why you're doing it?
Just the purpose.
My, my dad, Van Keener, resident next door. My parents gave us some land to build upon in 19, in the mid-'90s, and since then, my parents have passed away, and when my dad died a couple of years ago, my siblings and I got together, I have three siblings, actually had three, and my sister actually passed away as well, which is sad. But, so, we, the siblings agreed, they didn't want this land developed, so we were, we as neighbors were concerned that the house of my dad should be sold with enough land to have a flag lot in the back, and we didn't want that, and my siblings agreed. So, they were, they approved of this idea that we would actually disinherit, you know, a lot of the sale of the house and actually pay my siblings for this land. So, it's sort of within the family, we decided to preserve this land, to stay as is, because that's how we want it. So, we also recently just had an offer on the house, and the closing is June 27th, so we were hoping to get this done in time, because the people buying it have seen a sketch, but not an official map in the deed.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any objections to this A&R? Okay, we'll sign it.
And can I, can I do a question?
Yes.
The people who signed this document in red, please sign it in black, otherwise I think we'll have to have to come in.
Okay.
I have a black pen.
That's okay.
Help me here, one second. Blue ink, Chris, is that correct?
Do you have the appropriate?
Chris, is this the right pen? The blue one? The black one?
Either one.
Either one?
Whichever one works. Sue has assured me that both of them are.
Blue, black, not red.
Anyone?
Transportation Task Force will be meeting Friday to review a proposal which has come in and to determine how to proceed.
Is that, is that a public meeting?
I'm sorry?
Is that a public meeting, or is that executive?
It's a public meeting, yeah. Friday, 9:00 a.m., first floor meeting room.
From the zoning subcommittee, I'd just like to remind everyone watching at home that two weeks from now, on Wednesday, June 20th, is our semi-annual zoning forum, when we invite members of the public to come in and talk to us about their zoning priorities. And I'll remind members of the board that we will have a discussion scheduled on the planning board agenda for that evening, to follow up on the discussion from our last meeting on the board's priorities going forward.
Thank you, Mr. O'Phee. Ms. Brester?
I, I'm sorry to contradict Mr. Rosnoy, but I believe Guilford told us that the meeting of the transportation plan task force is not public during the process of selecting a consultant.
Ah, thank you.
All right, I'm going to leave this to the professionals. Unless there's anything else, oh, we have to, we have to decide when we're having our next meeting, we have a request that it be, we have a problem, Ms. Brester will explain.
Yes, we've had a number of...
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for waiting. Thank you.
We've had a number of difficulties in the office, people being out because of family issues, and so, we did not submit a legal ad in time for it to be published, for a public hearing to occur on June 20th. And this is one of the Amherst College projects. I haven't discussed this with Amherst College yet. It's 79 South Pleasant Street, so...
Tom will not be at me.
This is one of Tom Davies' projects, and also Christine Royal, the people who were here earlier tonight for 67 Seligman, or 67 North Hampton Road, Seligman Dorm. So, in any event, I contacted Mr. Weber earlier today to find out if he was amenable to opening up the possibility of having a meeting on June 27th instead of June 20th. Because if that would be amenable to you, we could file the legal ad this coming Friday.
Can we get a quorum here on the 27th? I'm available.
I am not.
Raise your hand if you're available, please.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
All right, we have, one, two, three, raise your hands, one, two, three, four, five definite, six definite, we're good. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. So, the meeting for the 20th is canceled.
So, the alternative, may I just follow up on that? The alternative for that if there's some reason why Amherst College can't make it that night would be either July 11th or July 18th.
The 11th is our regular week, isn't it?
The 18th is the regular week.
Oh, right.
Would be the 4th if we...
I'm out of town the 11th.
What about July 4th? Seriously?
I'm unavailable the 11th.
So, otherwise, it would be the 18th?
Uh huh. Yeah, I think 18th, yeah.
I'll present it to them that way.
Someone wants to, else wants to chair on the 11th.
We have a vice chairman.
Unless we have a strong reason to do otherwise, my preference is to not have us meet on nights that aren't part of our regular schedule. We can't do it in this room, it screws up the TV coverage, it screws up the public's expectations.
Yeah, let's go with the 18th.
So, we have no meeting on the 4th?
That's right.
Okay.
So, I will...
Is there, did I miss one?
You require the fork prints yourselves?
Oh, you can't take them yet. My secretary in our office has to process them, and then someone, she will call one of you when, but he, don't take them, Milo.
Don't take them.
You're supposed to draw them yourself and sign. You guys, you can take that, but if you're taking these...
While she's doing that, we had to re-sign that decision in black. Where is that, where are we with that?
Right here.
We did that, yeah.
Did it.
It's all done?
It's done.
Okay.
So, may I just clarify that I'm going to present to Amherst College the option of having a meeting on the 27th of June, and if that doesn't work out for them, then the meeting will be on the 18th of July.
Right? Right. All right, so, our next meeting's the 27th of June. Do we have anything else, Ms. Brester?
Are we scheduling August now or not?
I think...
Let's go with June and July.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go with that for now, we'll work, we'll figure it out at our next meeting. It's too late to try and rescheduling right now.
Do we have...
Our next meeting's the 27th.
That's right.
Term expirations in July?
Term expirations in July?
Yeah, I'm, I expire.
Oh, really? Are you going to re-up?
Yeah.
So, do we need to re-submit a CAF, or?
I don't believe so. I've passed your names along. I asked you early in the fall, or in the spring, um, and whoever I asked said that they were willing to serve again, and I've passed the names along to the people upstairs, so I'm hoping that they will take action on that.
All right. Anything else? Or adjourned? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.